Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to the December 7th City Council meeting. December 7th, of course, is the 80th anniversary of the bombing of Pearl Harbor. So for all of our veterans who may be in the audience and those who are viewing, God bless you for what you do and thank you for your service. We'll begin today's meeting as we begin all of our gatherings and that is by asking God's blessing on these proceedings. So I would ask Reverend Neil Richardson from Safe House Ministries to come forward, please. Hey Neil.
Shall we pray? So Father God, as we pause before we pick up the business of the city and face any challenges that are coming our way, I just ask God that today be a day of unity. Today be a day that you bless our leaders with the ability to lead boldly into the future. And I pray protection and blessings on our city. Bless this time together in your precious name, amen.
Amen. Neil, thank you so much, sir. And thank you for what you do. Your ministry through Safe House and the expansion onto Victor Drive is just nothing short of phenomenal, particularly around this time of year. So I just want to thank you for what you do in the public, sir. All right, if you would, please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating justice for all.
Thank you. Motion that the minutes be received from the Mayor Pro Tem and I think I heard a second from Counselor Tucker. If there are any edits that need to be made or any discussion, please say so now. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, the minutes are approved. Every one of our council meetings, we give a little update on COVID. COVID is, you can't turn on the news without still seeing somebody talking about the different variants and the different strains. I will tell you again, thanks to the citizens of this community that tend to try to look after each other. The numbers have remained fairly flat here in Columbus. We did anticipate a little surge right after the Thanksgiving holiday. We were monitoring that very closely, particularly the numbers as they relate to our hospitalization rate. And we actually overlaid it against the same period from last year. And last year, while we saw a tremendous spike about a week after Thanksgiving, this year it has stayed flat. So I think that's a testament to the fact that there are so many people who have gotten the vaccine and others that may have been infected and now have some natural antibodies. But our hospitalization rate stays in the low 30s. So we're keeping an eye on it. Vaccination rate is still around 44% of people that haven't had at least one shot and around 40 for those that are fully vaccinated. So again, anybody that has not considered or had the vaccine yet, my recommendation is talk to your doctor. Whatever your doctor suggests, I would urge you to give weight to. But I also want to mention something very quickly, just about another pandemic that we're fighting here in Columbus and that we're fighting in Georgia and around the country. And that's this pandemic of gun violence, of violent crime. Yesterday, two residents in Muskogee County lost their lives to gun violence. That is absolutely unacceptable. One was a gentleman that was going about his day in the morning to conduct some business and was killed outside that business. The individuals that perpetrated these acts are part of a culture that permeates our country right now of people that who have absolutely no value. They find no value in human life. And that should not happen in our community. We are not going to allow that to continue to happen in our community. Our law enforcement personnel, to include the Sheriff's Office, our Police Department, they do an outstanding job. They deserve our thanks and our prayers and they certainly need our assistance when it comes to trying to solve some of these issues that we're facing. Our homicide detectives, they work mighty long hours, but they do a mighty good job. And our objective with these two specific incidents is to find those individuals. We've spoken with the DA. The DA is committed to trying to make sure that anybody that commits a violent act with a gun is punished a little extra because of the gun at the scene of the crime. So our goal right now is try to find those individuals and put them away. But our law enforcement's goal too is to provide safety for our folks. And for that portion of it, they need your help. We are engaging clergy. We're engaging different organizations throughout our community to try to come together and unite so that we're able to share information in a timely fashion that will hopefully at least stop the retaliatory issues, if not stop some of these brazen issues. But anyway, our thoughts and our prayers are with the families of those individuals and they are for our city and for our state and for our country. And I hope that you all will keep all of those entities in your prayers as well. All right, before we move to the city attorney's agenda, I want to call up a couple of items and I want to turn it over to the city manager for an announcement regarding our public services and then we'll have one other that we'll bring up in just a moment. Mr. Hughley.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Counsel and to each of you. And Mayor, thank you for allowing me to bring up two items on my agenda. And at this time, Mayor, I am going to ask Drell Short to come forward to the podium. And let me say to you, I am pleased to bring before you for confirmation this morning, Ms. Drell Short. She is my choice for appointment to the position of Public Works Director for the Columbus Consolidated Government. Now, I know each of you, Mayor and Counsel, know Drell Short. She needs no introduction to the people around this table. However, for those present here in the chambers this morning and those watching by television, I want to briefly share just a little information about Drell Short. Drell started her career in public service with the Columbus Consolidated Government back in 1984. She has served in numerous capacities in the Public Works Department and has spent the last 30 years of her 37-year career in management and leadership. She was promoted to Chief of Operations in 1991, Special Enforcement Division Manager in the year 2000, interim Deputy Director Budget and Logistics Fleet Management in 2009, and Storm Water Management Division Manager in 2009. As you can see, Drell has worked and managed nearly every division within the Public Works Department. Drell has served as Deputy Director, in fact, of the Public Works Department since 2017. So as City Manager, I can tell you that we are fortunate to have someone with this level of invaluable experience already in-house. Drell, in my mind, is the right person at the right time to take on the leadership role at the Public Works Department. And most of you know that the Public Works Department touches every citizen in every area of our community in one way or another. And Drell Short has worked almost every division in that department. And I'll tell you, she graduated from Troy University with the Bachelor of Arts degree in Business Administration Management. She has been recognized by the American Public Works Association for her contributions to the public works profession, community involvement, and for professional excellence. Drell is sought after as a CCG facilitator for numerous management and development courses. She has actually facilitated and managed those courses in our in-house career development program. Drell was born in Washington, DC, but has lived in Columbus, Georgia, all of her adult life. And she is a granddaughter of Ms. Adelia C. Mack, a longtime civic leader in Columbus. And you all know the Adelia Mack Center over in the Carver Heights area, right outside or behind this council chambers. Drell has two sisters, of which one is her identical tween. And four brothers, of which Stephen Short and his family are also residents of Columbus. And so, Mayor and Counsel, it is my request at this time that you approve the appointment of Drell Short as Director of the Department of Public Works. And a lot of employees are here and I'd ask them to stand and department heads are here supporting her. I'd ask you to stand. But Mayor and Counsel, I'm asking for your approval of this appointment.
Motion approved from Counsel Crabbe. I heard a second from Counselor House, but I think they could very easily come from any of these council members. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Chief Pat.
Thank you so much. First, let me say good morning and gather my emotions here real quick. There's a lot going through me, but I'm okay. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, my deputy city managers, and to the esteemed council. I am truly honored and humbled to be accepting this appointment today. If you would just allow me a few seconds to thank those that have supported me throughout the years, and they've been long years, but without their support, I couldn't do it. The entire Public Works team, those of you that are here today, those that are out there still working, but I know they're thinking about me because they've stopped by the office and say, "Go, Drell. You can do this. We can do this as a team." I want to thank my family, of which my brother Stephen, CB Liz, would you back him up? Is representing my family. They keep me grounded and it's a hard job, but they do a good job. I want to thank my friends who are here, who I haven't mentioned, but I know that they're here and I appreciate them and I thank them for everything. I don't take this appointment lightly. I know Public Works is a large department with many challenges, but as our former director, RW Dick McKee, and many of you remember him, said to all of us, "If it was easy, anybody could do it." And it's because of that and the heart of these employees that I know that we will meet the challenge. So I'm not going to stand here for a long time, Mr. City Manager. I'm going to make it really short and brief and just say, "Thank you. I wish you all a great day and a happy holiday season." Thank you again. Now, Public Works, let's go to work. Thank you.
Well, take care, Stephen, my old CHS basketball teammate. We will let the room clear just a little bit. All right, we've got one other item, I think, on the city manager's agenda. It's Mr. Freddie Broom from Georgia Municipal Association to speak about the Embrace Program. Mr. Hughley?
This item up on my agenda. Mr. Freddie Broom is from the Georgia Municipal Association. And you know that we are longtime members of the Georgia Municipal Association. And let me just say that our mayor is on the Georgia Municipal Association Board of Directors and he is also on the Georgia Municipal Association Executive Committee. And so they, the mayor contributes so much to GMA, they keep calling on him. I know that he's on a number of other committees with GMA. And so we are excited to be partners with Georgia Municipal Association. So Mr. Broom is here. There's an equity and inclusion program statewide that Georgia Municipal Association has been going from city to city across the state and sharing information. And I know that Mr. Broom has been to many of the cities. There's 537 to 38 cities in Georgia. But he is here today to share with us what's going on with GMA and equity and inclusion. And we're happy to have Mr. Freddie Broom with us this morning. Mike is yours.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, City Manager, for allowing me to come in and speak briefly about the program we have with GMA, Embrace Program. Once again, my name is Freddie Broom and I serve as Director of Equity and Inclusion at Georgia Municipal Association. We do have a, do we have the video?
Yes.
Okay. We do have a short video that I'll share first to kind of let you know more about our Embrace Program. Hello. My name is Freddie Broom and I'm Director of Equity and Inclusion at Georgia Municipal Association. And I'm excited about the work that we're doing at GMA and Georgia City Solutions with our Embrace Program. We're traveling across the state and we're showing everyone the importance of valuing differences and fostering relationships. When we embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion, it allows us to strengthen our organizations and strengthen our communities, to create that place where people want to live, want to work, want to play.
Facilitated by the Georgia Municipal Association and Georgia City Solutions, the Embrace Program gives Georgia's cities and partner organizations the unmatched opportunity to participate in a learning experience designed to educate and nurture the essence of valuing differences and embracing equity and inclusion for the betterment of all. In the first five months of the program, GMA staff led by Freddie Broom have made significant impacts across the state. Since January 2021, the Embrace Program has delivered training and learning experiences to over 1,000 municipal officials, as well as Georgia Fire Chiefs Association members, Garden City, Cartersville, Winder and Brunswick City Staff, members of the City of Morcross Community Boards and Committees, and one department of the Atlanta Regional Commission. The classes offered through the Embrace Program were designed to build diverse, equitable, and inclusive communities by equipping participants with the tools to value differences which will better serve their organizations and communities. The program's class catalog includes Introduction to Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion for Newly-Elected Officials, Facilitating Conversations Around Race, Supervisor Training, Public Safety Training, and a Basic Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Class. These classes are available for those looking to engage in conversations to enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion in their organizations. Participants in the training classes actively listen, learn, and engage in activities to enhance their learning experiences. Classes are delivered virtually and in-person and can be customized to specific groups such as professional organizations, frontline city employees, department supervisors, citizen committees, elected officials, and more. Other diversity, equity, and inclusion offerings include Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Consultation to Cities, Emotional Intelligence Training, Panelist for Fire Chief and Police Chief Hiring Process, Fire Department Promotional Assessment Facilitation. The Embrace Workshop Series, which began in June 2021, is a monthly one-hour training session that allows participants to engage in discussions and activities centered around diversity, equity, and inclusion. Additionally, GMA and GCS will offer the Embrace Roundtable Series. This bimonthly meeting is designed to bring all cities that currently have or are interested in having diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives together to network and provide support, resources, and technical services. GMA internal staff are also benefiting from the Embrace Initiative and in-house diversity, equity, and inclusion experts. In addition to receiving celebrating cultures emails, staff participate in a monthly staff roundtable discussion, share resources in a monthly newsletter, and are encouraged to ask questions that lead to constructive conversations. Here's what those who have experienced GCS and GMA's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts are saying.
This type of training is important now more than ever. There is a culture shift that has moved to the point where the minority is not the majority and not everyone is equipped to handle that shift. As an immigrant, I would like to see the pie shared equitably and that we are all open for the opportunity to be included fairly. Equity and inclusion is the beginning of the harder conversation that needs to happen and I'm here for it.
I'd just like to say in regards to the Equity and Inclusion Initiative, kudos to GMA for starting such a fantastic initiative. We're all looking forward to contributing, you know, not just based off race, but you know, there's different variables and we're all excited to, you know, just be inclusive as one.
Thank you for your continued support of the Embrace Program and its initiatives. Please visit www.gacities.com/Embrace to learn more and for regular program updates.
So we're excited about Embrace Program. As I travel across the state, you know, we're trying to get everyone to understand that our Embrace Program is not about a race program. You know, it's about a program of finding a way to value the difference of each individuals in the organization and individuals in the community. And as we find a way to value the differences of each other, we find a way to bring each other together to strengthen organizations and strengthen the community. And that's what our Embrace Program is about. We do around, we talk a lot about making sure people truly understand what diversity is, what equity is, and what inclusion is, because a lot of times when you say diversity, people think that it's all about race and it's not. Diversity is about differences and that's what we're trying to get everyone to understand is the point of valuing the difference of each other and how do you find a way to bring all those differences together. Equity is important as well and we talk about the point of being more equitable in local government. Sometimes people get equity and equality confused and they're both about fairness, but the difference is equality is about the sameness. And when you start understanding we're all different in our communities and we have different needs, then you know that you can't treat everyone the exact same way. And that's why we talk about being more equitable, because equitable is about making sure everyone has the same opportunities as everyone else. So I'll give you a quick example of when we give a demonstration of what equity is. Equity is about if the city decides they're going to buy everyone a polo shirt to wear to an event. They buy everyone polo shirts and they buy one size, a medium. That's called equality because you're getting everyone the exact same thing, but we realize that we're all different. So equity lets us know that we can't get the exact same thing for everyone, so we get everyone different sizes because everyone wears different sizes. And that's why when we talk to our local governments, we get to understand the importance of equality and being more equitable with our practices, because we want to make sure that all members of the community are receiving the same services, but understanding that they may need different needs because they are different. And then we talk about inclusion as well and getting our communities to understand the importance of inclusion, because inclusion is more than inviting someone. Inclusion is more than someone being a part of the community. You know, we've all been a part of a conversation and felt like we wasn't part of that conversation. And that's a great example of why you have to have a conversation of inclusion, because inclusion is about creating a space, not only where someone's included, but they feel included and they feel like they belong. And when you have members in your community who feel like they're a part of your community, they belong with your community, then that's how you strengthen your community. And that's what we're doing with our Embrace Program, is going around getting everyone to understand the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion and how to incorporate that into your practices to make your community stronger. We're working with a lot of different cities. As the videos say, the video is actually outdated because as of yesterday, I just finished up some training in Augusta. We're now reached over 3,000 members of our cities that we're working with. And we're going around providing training, whether it's to just individual leadership teams, whether it's to the entire city. We actually had one community that brought us in because there was having some issues between elected officials and members in the community. And I actually went in and facilitated the conversation of how to bring the community together and they actually walked away with points of what they can do in the future to be a more inclusive community. We also work with local chambers, so I just had a meeting with one chamber and they brought us in with other cities, other county commissioners. They had school boards, they had leaders in the community and businesses. And everyone came together and they talked about how can they make their community stronger by finding ways to incorporate inclusion and diversity efforts within their work. And so we're working with a lot of different businesses as well, even education. We worked with one community and brought city leaders together with elected officials at one of the technical colleges to address the equities and inequities in education as well. So we're just here as a resource to find out what do you need and how can we better serve you as a member of GMA, because you are a part of GMA. And what we want to do is be a resource, you know, when it comes. And that's why Embrace Program is designed to be a resource to our cities, to help them address any needs when it comes to embracing equity, inclusion in their community, so we can all come together, celebrate the differences, and create a place where everybody wants to live, work, and play. I'll be happy to ask any questions that you may have about our Embrace Program.
Counselor Tucker?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Broom. Back in October, I was the one that attended the District 8 Fall Meeting. And it was very interactive and I was happy to hear that our city manager, he gave a presentation about Embrace and talking about equity, inclusion, and diversity. And the first thing I thought is, how can we bring that to Columbus? And then today, here it is, December, a month later almost, and you're here doing this presentation. And I'm still thinking, how can we, you know, bring this, exactly what you're talking about? Because a lot of times we say diversity and we think of race and it's not. And those exercises that I participated in, you know, I had my 14-year-old with me on that day. But the exercises that we participated in, it really brings more awareness. So that's the question, is how can we bring that and what do we need to do? Because I really appreciated everything that was taught during that District 8 meeting.
He should get on his calendar. And the city manager and I have talked about making sure that Mr. Broom gets an invitation to bring one or more of those classes to Columbus. He's pretty booked up. It's an outstanding program and I gotta, I have to make sure everybody knows that our city manager is on the board of the Equity and Inclusion Commission Committee and helped to kind of create this. And of course, we're excited about the results we think it can yield.
And so, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, this is just kind of a first step and introduction. And as Counselor Tucker said, we were at the District 8 meeting and we will be following up with Mr. Broom and we will be talking about how we can bring him back to Columbus. You heard him say he was in Augusta, Georgia for training just yesterday. And you know how I feel about...
Being a first.
Yeah, so we will be in touch, Mr. Broom. Thank you for coming. And this is not your last trip to Columbus, Georgia.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Mr. Broom, thank you. And I'll tell you, GMA has a wealth of resources, not just in the equity and inclusion area, but if anybody's looking for a reference point and they've got a beautiful new building. So if you're in Atlanta and you need to stop and get some work done, they want you to go use their building. If you're meeting with somebody in the Atlanta area, you can call ahead and they'll schedule a time for you. I tell you, the last year in particular... I tell you, the last year in particular, GMA's been an incredible beacon in trying to help us navigate some of the challenges that the world has gone through over the last, over the last 20 months, so they're a valuable asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broom. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, we'll move on to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The first few items, we've got some zoning hearings. I understand a couple of these may be delayed, so it shouldn't take too long, but the first one up is property at 6,500 6516 Lynch Road, and Mayor Pro Tim Allen, I think, wants to make a motion on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, the, the calls and letters, emails that Counselor House and I have received since this first came to light have been really overwhelming almost. What I think he and I would like to do is ask for a delay until January, the second meeting in January, to allow the citizens in that area to meet with the developer and talk more about what their plans are for this area, and maybe even have someone from the state there to talk about the roundabout and the effects on that intersection as well. So I would move for a delay until Jan, second meeting in January.
All right, there's a motion, the second, to delay. Is there any discussion as to the delay? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is delayed, but we will allow anybody that is here that wanted to speak to, to this issue to have an opportunity to do so.
We're gonna bring that back the fourth Tuesday in January at a 5:30 meeting, but if you, if somebody needs to speak today, come on up and give us your name and address.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's William H. Ward. I'm a resident of Jackson Road, which intersects with Lynch Road, and I'm a user of this intersection every time I come to Columbus, except when it's closed down for an accident, and we have to go over to the county line access to Manchester Expressway. I didn't know about this proposal until this past Friday after business hours, so I haven't had a chance to study it, but just looking at the Planning Advisory Commission staff report, I see on the first page compatibility with existing land uses, and the answer from the city planning department is yes. And my thought was, what an absurdity! I mean, here you're, you're taking at a busy intersection, which is already maxed out with traffic use every day, and you want to impose on that intersection a 16-pump gas station, a restaurant, a convenience store, and a liquor store on a road that's in access to two major schools in the area. At the end of Lynch Road is Matthew School, which is an elementary school, and over on Garrett Road, which uses that same intersection every day, is a, is a middle school. School buses regularly negotiate that intersection. And right under that's the environmental impacts, and let me give you a little history of my background with issues of this. I've been involved off and on since 1997, and if you consider that date, that's 25 years ago now. And I've been a part of discussions regarding community development in that area, and at the time I got involved, that area was a rural area. There weren't streetlights, there weren't sidewalks, and now we've had the entire Garrett Creek development and all the surrounding areas that, that embrace that. And all, all these, all this development over the past 25 years has to come through that same intersection that we're considering putting this traffic aggravating development So my initial response to this is this is a manifestly bad idea. The initial cosmetic evaluation you have from your planning department glosses over a lot of things. Like, one of the things, it says 10 property owners within 300 feet have been notified, and you have no objections. Well, how were they notified? They were notified in a very bland, probably letter communication that no one paid any attention to, and when is this being foisted on all the local property owners? Today's December 7th, 2021, eight, not, aside from the fact that it's the 80th anniversary of the Pearl Harbor attack, it's the beginning of what we used to call the Christmas season. Now it's the winter break, and people are not focused on such things as zoning requests, zoning variances. So I would echo the, the motion that's been made to delay this until the time that the local affected people can be advised, get together, and discuss it. And I would welcome that, and I will do what I can to make that a positive process. I don't want to belabor this anymore. You've heard my, just out of curiosity, is there anyone else other than me here that's interested in this issue? Well, that, that shows you how the word is, has or has not got around. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Okay, did y'all want to say anything this morning? Give them your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, my name is Harland Price. I'm actually Architect of Record for the job. Sort of make sure that the council knows we want to be players for the community. I think the expectation is that particular stretch of road, of Macon Road, is a major thoroughfare. That's kind of where you kind of want to put these things, to keep them out of neighborhoods and such, I know, but you can make the argument about the intersection pretty much with both the intersection along there. I know that actually intersection is headed to be one of the roundabouts that will eventually be put along that road, so I think that will alleviate a lot of the, I guess, accidents that may be occurring in there and such, or concerns for that, because that will slow traffic down. We have worked for months with city engineering and with traffic and with GDOT to make sure we are meeting all the proper conditions for that road, like there is no cut from Macon Road on that property. It's only off Lynch Road at the request of GDOT, we would not do that. So we are trying to be team players here, and the timing, just the way it happened, because we've delayed the distance between PAC and this has been a couple of months, because we've been addressing and readdressing and working with the different conditions that, that the city and the state have wanted to put on the property, so just to make sure that's understood and on the record.
Was it Mr. Price? Was that your, will you give your full name for the clerk, so she...
Harland Price, with Architecture Innovations Design Group.
Thank you.
And that's all, I just wanted to kind of make sure that was on the record.
Okay, any other questions around the table? If not, we'll bring this back the fourth Tuesday in January, the 5:30 meeting. Be on first reading again at that time. All right, thank you all. Mayor, the next zoning item is property at 4020 J Street, going from neighborhood commercial to general commercial. Mr. Blackburn, petitioner, are they here? Mr. Johnson, have you had any contact?
We send letters to the applicant, we send emails to the applicant, and we call the applicant, so...
Well, Mayor, we'll probably go on and delay this matter. If there's no objection, delay the first reading until next Tuesday, and perhaps the applicant can make an appearance.
Okay.
All right.
Do we need a motion to delay that?
That'd be fine, for the record.
Mayor Pro Tim's motion to delay, and second from Counsel Crabbe. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against, signify by saying no. All right, delay passes.
All right. The third zoning item is property at 877 Far Road, proposed for general commercial. I think Counselor Huff wants to make a motion to delay this item also.
Yeah, Counselor, hang on, Counselor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Attorney. It was brought to my attention on Friday, because I didn't see anything to come across the PAC meeting, that's the Planning Advisory Commission. Usually when things come up for District Three, between the district and myself, someone shows up to the PAC meeting, so somehow we missed it. Spoke with Mr. Deese last night and expressed to him that the neighbors and the residents, constituents were not happy, and they would be here this morning to speak, and Mr. Deese has agreed to come back. He drove here from Jacksonville, Florida, so he's agreed to come back to Columbus after the constituents agree on what's a good time for you all to sit down so we can discuss it, but they are opposed to the whole idea, because we have, I guess, over the last 75-plus years, it's been a community out there, and it's housing and apartments, and you literally are like walking in this room and putting a grocery store right here in the middle, and it's all housing. It sounds good, it sounds good because you're thinking about residents and people being able to walk to the grocery store and things of this nature, but it interrupts what we have out there in the peacefulness, and we have a major interchange roadway project going on at 185 and Oak City Road, and when that project is completed, it will move things around a little bit. It will slow traffic down, and it will decrease the number of cars coming that direction. And a lot of the constituents that are here this morning, they exit out on Ridgefield, which comes right there where the grocery store would be. So I will stop at this point and let you speak. I'm getting ready to, let me make my motion, and we'll hear from you, and then we'll hear from all the constituents that want to speak this morning. I'd like to make a motion to delay this until...
All right, delay for how long?
Second Tuesday, second Tuesday in January.
All right, there's a motion from Counselor Huff.
Second Tuesday or fourth Tuesday?
Fourth Tuesday, fourth Tuesday, I'm sorry, that's right. Fourth Tuesday, second meeting in January, fourth Tuesday.
Okay, and there was a second from Counselor Tucker. Is there any discussion to the delay? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is delayed. Sir, if you would, state your name and, and address, please, sir.
My name is Tim Deese. I live in Jacksonville, Florida. I'm originally from, born and raised Columbus, Georgia. Counsel, I thank you very much for hearing this, and Mr. Huff, I thank you very much for your call last night. I appreciate everything you said this morning. I have owned that property for 40 years. Now, as you can imagine, I have been offered many, many times to sell that property, put undesirable things in there. I have looked at this over the last two years and made a decision based purely on how that area has grown. It is a very, very nice area. Those two apartment complexes are relatively filled. Those neighborhoods around there are well-groomed. I was very impressed, having grown up in South Columbus, with how that thing has taken root out there and really grown into a nice area. So I met with a commercial real estate developer, and I asked what would be the best thing to put out there? They said services, dental offices, grocery stores, a doctor's office, et cetera, et cetera, to solicit those type businesses. If I sell that to a developer and he puts in apartments, four acres, ladies and gentlemen, as you well know, is huge, that is going to create a lot more of a traffic disturbance than a services center for items that they have to go all the way to Columbus to get. I will work with the individuals, Mr. K, Mr. Huff, in any way they want me to work with them. Tell me what you would like to have there. I've had it 40 years. I'll, I'll sell it to somebody that's gonna do what your constituents want to do with it. I have no reason not to do that. Thank you very much for hearing.
I, I thank you for your comments this morning, but that's, that's exactly what the constituents want. They want to be able to sit down and talk to you and let you know what they would like to have.
Absolutely. I look forward to that opportunity. Thank you, sir.
Okay, did anybody, anybody else want to speak on this matter? Okay. Give me your name and address, for the record, please.
Sorry, good morning. My name is Aretha Richards, and I'm a community manager of Farfield Manor Senior Apartments, located at 419 Far Road. Now, I found out about this at 11 o'clock yesterday, so I was kind of blindsided. I'd, there's a lot more discussion that needs to take place, there's a lot more information that I need before I can make an informed decision. I don't want to make a knee-jerk reaction. I've got 76 residents, 62 and older, with mobility issues. The nearest grocery store is Pigly Wiggly, ultimately four to five blocks away, with heavy traffic on St. Mary's Road, a hill going up Far Road, not adequate sidewalks. So if you, if you're talking about a grocery store that's gonna provide my residents with easy access to affordable food, to services, where they don't have to wait for transportation or pay $2.50 there and $2.50 back, you kind of see where I'm leaning. So, you know, the more information we get on this and we, and we see exactly what we're looking at, then we can make an informed decision. But for my residents who are 62 years and older, you know, living on an extremely fixed income, needing access to services, needing access to doctors, all of the above, if, if that's what it's gonna be, then I can tell you that's where I'm gonna lean toward, because I got 76 people who need those services. It's not a want, it's a need. You know, walking up Far Road, up that hill, it may be 25 miles an hour, but I guarantee you, they don't go down that hill or up that hill 25 miles an hour. There are sidewalks, they have to cross Far Road to get to a sidewalk. There's not sidewalks on both sides. And then you've got the exit coming in at the end of Far Road, where Ceda Road is, you've got all that traffic that's gonna come from the base opening up, and, you know, that exit, I mean, there's, there's so many factors. So, sorry, I'm animated, but we've got a lot of factors we've got to discuss, and we definitely need to sit down, and we need to see exactly what type of commercial development we're looking at, and we've got to see what kind of services are gonna be brought to that area. So, thank you.
Okay, ma'am. Give them your name, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Linda Parker, and I live at 4208 Ridgefield Drive. We are here in opposition of this rezoning on Far Road. When I call the information, they say it a grocery store. I'm not impressed, or we're not impressed with that. Are we talking about a Kroger, a Winn-Dixie, or a Publix, or Walmart? Well, I'm still not impressed. Again, I am concerned, or we are concerned, about a store in between two apartments on a busy two-lane, high-traffic residential zone. And when I talk about high traffic, I'm talking about Fort Benning traffic and the school buses. Sometime, we can't get on Far Road. This would not be conducive to the families who live in this area. We don't need a store with slot machines, gas station, sale of alcohol. We already have that on both ends of Far Road. On one end, we have a store with all of those things, and on the second, first end coming in, we have two, and about 500 feet away, we have three, plus Pigly Wiggly. And about five hundred feet away, we have three, plus Pigly Wiggly. When we talk about rezoning, which some of our homes are in this rezon, will our house, homes be commercial, or what? What, what, what would this mean with our homes? We want our community to be improved, which we have not found anyone yet to help us improve our community, so that we will be able to live in a safe environment. Or even sell our homes if we deem we, this is what we want to do, sell our home. We... I just found out who the person is. And this person don't live here. Because if you live here in Columbus, you'll know that that's not suitable to have a grocery store right between two subsidized housing. So I pray this council and the rezoning committee, whomever they are, will reconsider rezoning this residential area on Far Road. Because that would not be acceptable to the people who lives in, in this area, in this housing area especially, for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Okay, give them your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Derek Bradford. I live at four six oh one Street Drive, uh, I'm right up the street from Ridgefield. And I use the entrance onto Far Road, the intersection of Far Road and Ridgefield, all the time. I do not believe that we'd need a grocery store or a package store there. Geographically, that would be a bad idea. Uh, the traffic that it would bring, the congregation of people that it would bring. Uh, however, if he is just gonna sell that property to someone who would turn it into an apartment complex, I would rather it be, uh, some sort of service, dentist's office, anything else but not a package store, not any kind of store, anything like that. So I'm willing to be part of any discussion, you know, to, I guess, see what we can figure out. Anything but that, I believe.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments. Uh, a meeting will be set for everyone.
I'm Mary J. Quiller, and I reside at forty-two thirty-three Ridgefield Drive. And I too, uh, am in compliance, uh, and want to say that I agree with Mr., the statements that Mrs. Parker has made. And we're very happy that Mr., the owner of the property, wants to talk to us. However, um, we still, as members of the neighborhood, are not considering wanting to have a store, as has been said. I rise and say something that, uh, has not been said. It has been... I'm a member of Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, and we recently have been, uh, having to make a change because of change that's coming in the city, uh, by way of the bypass. Now, we are excited, having mixed emotions about having to move to a new location. Uh, and that's on Far Road and forward. Then we have to also be concerned about the traffic and tho- those kinds of things. As Ms. Parker has said, the traffic is so rough now that you can hardly get out without any additional things. We are surrounded by stores and things. If there are things that are coming into the neighborhood that's going to increase the value of the neighborhood, then we are supportive of it. But you have people who have lived there in the neighborhood, have nice homes, and always, recently, when you talk about the South Columbus area, sometimes it's not given in high flavor. So we are excited about someone who owns property doing something that's going to enhance the value of our properties as we continue to reside there in that area. Thank you.
Ms. Quiller.
Good morning. My name is Olive Adal Kendall, and I live at forty-five oh two Moline Avenue. My parents built their home in Cedar Hills in nineteen sixty-three. I returned to Columbus about twenty years ago, and due to the death of my parents, I live in that property now. I'm sorry that we did not know earlier about the owner who is a Columbus resident. But irregardless of that, I have some concerns about putting a grocery store, putting, um, any type of commercial property, uh, stores there that are, as has been said, will not enhance the community or enhance the value of the property and the community. The other thing that I'm very concerned about, as has been stated, all of the different little, I don't know if you call them convenience stores or whatever, that have popped up in our area, and now at one of those stores, we even have a bus station, either for trailway or whatever the commercial, uh, buses are. And that creates additional people coming into our community. And you watch people hanging out at those particular, uh, stores. Also, we've had some crime at several of those stores. And so my concern is also that when I drive, and I try to do this, drive north, you don't see those kinds of, uh, commercial developments popping up around housing on that side of town. I, when I came back to Columbus, I was somewhat concerned, because now you have north and south. And when I left here many years ago, there was not that, uh, demarcation that this is the north, this is the south. And so the south is, um, crime-ridden, and this is happening. If we're gonna do anything, we need to try to improve the city as a whole and make sure that you are equitable. And the decisions that you make about what you're gonna put in whatever communities you decide should be there. Sure, I understand the person who works with, uh, seventy-two, uh, seniors, because I see them walking. But if you're really concerned about your seniors, you can provide shuttle service for them to go to the Pigly Wiggly or wherever else they need to go. So I'm open, as I always am, to hearing what the owner of the property is proposing. And hopefully, we will have more people to come out to that community. What you have to understand also is that many people in my community and on my street are eighty and ninety years old. So they're not here this morning, but they are also concerned. If we need to, I'm not opposed to us putting a petition together and walking our community to see exactly where those people, uh, stand on this issue, who are not able to come out this morning. But I'm speaking for many of them on Moline Avenue and also those that live on Bedford. So we will meet with the owner of the property, and I think we'll be open-minded. But we're also going to make sure that our issues are addressed, are addressed by the owner and are addressed by the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, one quick thing. Uh, most of the people that I called back here did not know the information. I had the information. I gave them the information. So I hope that the next meeting, that everybody in my area would be contacted.
To that point, uh, I need to get with you or someone in the group to choose a couple of dates that are good for the constituents, so that I can get back with, uh, Mr. Deese, for him to arrange his schedule around your schedule. He's gonna drive back from Jacksonville, Florida, to meet with you all so that you all can let him know what you want to put in that area.
Look, if I am to attend, I won't be here in Jan-, the first, first week, fourth, first week, third. I would be here in January. After that, I won't be back this year.
Okay. Well, I'll get with the group and make a phone call today. And for you all to meet and let me know what the dates, what dates are good, and then we'll let Mr. Deese know, so he can come back in and you all can sit down. It's, in the conversation I had last night, I let him know that he had spoken to a few people that, I guess, were in favor. I told him every phone call that I received was opposed to the idea. So he understands now that we have an issue going back and forth about the majority of my calls. All of my calls have been opposed to the idea. So we want to get you all together and change the, if it's changing from whatever idea it is. It does not have to be a grocery store. He's concerned about what you want now. He's willing to listen and for us to get together and put our ideas. So as you all leave today, please start talking about if the land is sold, if it's ever rezoned, would you like office space? What, what is it that you want there, and then we can come together.
Mr. Huff, may I say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Why weren't you aware of this?
Because in the Planning Advisory Commission on Trello, I follow Trello. And with Trello, it tells me when the planning advisory meetings, and I went back over that. I did not see anything on the November and December calendars for the...
We live in the same area, and the sign is right there on Far Road.
I travel Old Cesar Road most of the time, and I was addressed with that of why I didn't see the sign. I was not on the road as much during that period of time. And due to the craziness of the drivers in that area, I have not been looking left or right. I've been keeping my eyes on the road. So that was the reason I didn't see it. But when I was called by Mrs. Eva Smith, I reacted to it right away and took care of what was going on. She said she would give you a call, and you would call a few people. I called a few people, and we are here this morning. So I now know. Uh, sometimes I told Mrs. Eva Smith, "I don't know why I don't know sometimes." Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Parker.
All right, Counselor Tucker.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanted to let you know and the individual that's, um, working with selling the property that right now, we're about to have first read on doing a moratorium. And it's something that myself, Counselor Wood, Senate Counselor Barnes, brought up, because we are tired of those Lotto lounges. Um, even though it does state that, um, we're in first reading right now, and it's in reference to imposing a moratorium on the issuance of business license or certificate of occupancy for any new convenience store, with or without gas sales for a period of ninety days, for us to study that, because we are aware, um, of exactly what you all mentioned. And I'm tired of it in my district. I'm tired of it in those parts of the town. And hopefully, with the help of council, um, our, um, police department and other parties, we can address those issues, because there are vagrant issues in our area. So I just want to let you know that we are aware. And it, and hopefully, um, my counselor, um, my colleagues will support this when it goes on to second read next week. But we will have a ninety, um, day moratorium on convenience stores.
Let me jump in here before you leave. In my discussion with Mr. Deese last night, and letting you know, and letting him know how opposed you all were, in no way possible would it be a convenience store with Lotto. I've been opposed to that before it ever came up, so I'm in support of the moratorium. So whatever comes to that area will be based on the constituents and what they would like to have there. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, uh, with regards, I'm sorry, Ms. Deese, with regards to the moratorium, we'll talk more about it in a moment, but that won't apply to anything that's already been submitted to the planning department. So anything, this is on, is delayed, but this will still be, if, if you decided you wanted a convenience store, which I, it's clear you don't, that it, it could still go through. The moratorium only impacts anything that has yet to be submitted to, uh, planning. Ms. Deese, do you have a final comment?
I can promise you, I will keep it forty more damn years before I let a convenience store go on that four acre. I never had any intent of that to begin with. When I met with this lady, referenced, "What do we do with this?", services was the answer with a grocery store anchor. Grocery store is not necessary. Services such as dental, medical, police annex, except the tag office, these type things, if you tell me what you want me to pursue to put on that four acres, that makes it a whole lot easier for me to sell it, because it's what you want. But, but I can unless I know. And that's where Mr. Huff stepped in last night. He said, "Let's all sit down together and listen to them," and I will. And we'll put there on that four acres, which is available, what you feel would best suit your area. I have no intentions of doing anything any different than that. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Deese.
Okay. Thank all of y'all again for being here. This public hearing will be continued the fourth Tuesday in January at five thirty. Okay, Mayor and Council, you should have received a revised draft of the zoning at sixty-six seventy-two Billings Road around the table with five conditions that are potential amendments. And we'll turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem, see if he wants, um, wants to change any of these conditions.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Council, just wanted to let you know, hopefully this will be brief. The, uh, representative for the property, Mr. Chandler Riley, and I have had several discussions regarding the conditions on this property. It is adjacent to, uh, Heritage Place. And Ben Billings and I have worked together on this property for a number of years, trying to find the right use. It seems like this is, is the best use. And in the effort to protect the homes there and, and, uh, so they can maintain their quality of life, uh, I have discussed with, uh, Mr. Riley, uh, the, the conditions that the city attorney has laid before you. One thing we'd like to do is remove number one, because we've, we've replaced that with number two. So I would like to make a motion that the conditions be added to this. And I believe Mr. Riley is in agreement with these conditions and, and his client. So what we're doing, I'll make a motion that we strike number one, and we add two, three, and four, and five. So, Mr. Mayor, that's my, that's my motion.
Okay. There, do we want to state the items that are in there on the conditions?
I can. Number two, uh, is a minimum thirty-foot buffer, undisturbed. A minimum, uh, undisturbed, natural thirty-foot buffer shall be maintained by the storage unit business or any successor in interest facing the homes in Heritage Place. Number three is on the lot where the natural buffer does not meet thirty feet, the owner or successor in interest shall add and maintain plants to reach the minimum thirty feet. No pine trees shall be added. Number four, owner or successor in interest shall maintain a three-foot berm on the edge of the detention pond, with evergreen shrubbery planted, faced, planting facing the homes in Heritage Place. And number five, all planting shall be approved by the city arborist.
Okay. We've got a motion from Mayor Pro Tem on, uh, numbers two through five as far as amending the petition for rezoning. And I think I heard a second, second from Counselor Davis. All right. Any discussion to these, this amendment? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, those are added.
And then, Mayor, I think, uh, anybody that would, is here to be heard on this property can vouch and be heard today as well.
Sure. Mr. Riley, you want to make some comments, and then we'll hear if there are other folks for or against.
Sure. Uh, my name is Chandler Riley. I'm with the law firm of Page, Grant. I'm Sraus, Tucker, and Ford, eleven eleven Bay Avenue, third floor, Columbus, Georgia. And I represent All Good Storage Solutions, LLC, uh, whose owner is Jason Kramer. Mr. Kramer is here with me today as well. I wanted to thank, uh, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city manager, city attorney, and esteemed, uh, counselors today for your time and letting us come before you. Um, and thank you for all the good work you do for our community. So this project is, uh, we're working with Moon Meeks and Associates, a engineering firm, to get this project laid out. Moon Meeks is certainly one of the most well-respected engineering firms in the area. And today, we're looking at rezoning a parcel of property, about eight point six acres. Uh, let me get it here on the screen for you. As you can see, it's there, at the intersection of Billings Road and Warm Springs Road. It enter, you would enter off of Billings Road there. And, um, we're looking to rezone it from neighborhood commercial, which it's currently zoned at, to general commercial. Uh, the request was unanimously approved at the Planning Advisory Commission, and planning department has recommended approval with some... And planning department has recommended approval with some conditions, um, which we discussed and which Mayor Pro Tem Allen discussed a little bit ago. As you can see, this property is right on the threshold of an area there at Warm Springs and Billings Road where it transitions from residential, single-family properties, here on the south and the east, where it transitions to more commercial as you go west and north. Uh, immediately next door on this parcel here is a gas station and convenience store at the intersection of Warm Springs and Billings. Uh, and then, across Billings is general commercial. Across Warm Springs here is more general commercial. And as you go further up Warm Springs, you have more neighborhood commercial and general commercial. So, what we're proposing is a self-storage facility on this piece of property. And a self-storage facility would provide a nice, quiet transition from the single-family homes into the more commercial properties there. As everyone knows, a single, I'm sorry, a self-storage facility is about as quiet of a commercial development as you can have. Folks put their items in these self-storage facilities and rarely come back to retrieve them. You know, they sit there. So, you'd have very little vehicular traffic and no foot traffic on the property there. The layout of the development, as you can see here. My client plans to put a attractive, well-built self-storage facility there. It'd be done in two phases. Uh, first phase would be entering off of Billings Road here, uh, on the left as you're looking at the display there of this dash line. And then, down the road, uh, once the first phase was leased up to a certain percentage of units, uh, we'd be looking at the second phase. So, nothing would approach this neighborhood until further down the road. As we discussed, um, the developers are considering, uh, you know, some conditions on this property to address any concerns with this development, particularly with the buffering around the neighborhood there. Want to make sure everybody's taken care of. And so, we propose, as Mayor Pro Tem Allen mentioned, some buffering conditions on this property to include a 30-foot, uh, natural, undisturbed buffer around the entire south and eastern property borders with the neighborhood, with the neighborhood there. Now, the UDO, as it currently stands with no conditions on this property, would allow for as little as a 10-foot buffer with a wall or a fence. So, we're looking at substantially larger buffer than what the UDO would allow. In addition, uh, down here in the southeast corner where that detention pond is shown, we are looking at a condition of having a, an earthen berm around that with some plantings to help shield it from the neighborhood as well. And so, all of this is being done with the neighbors in mind to make sure they are adequately protected and buffered from this development. And as we mentioned, this development will have little negative impact. The property is already serviced by all necessary public facilities, utilities, services, uh, infrastructure. And the proposed development would have a little material effect on those services. As for traffic, as the planning department staff report noted, uh, the traffic will actually be positively impacted by this rezoning. Uh, traffic will actually decrease. Currently, with the current zoning, there's 501 average annual daily trips. With this rezoning, that would drop to 104 average annual daily trips. So, we're looking at about an 80% reduction in traffic there. The development would have a very positive and substantial economic impact for the city, including creating numerous construction jobs during the build-out, um, together with uh, business increases for any trades that might service the industry, you know, building out electricians, subcontractors in the construction industry. And in addition, permanent jobs would be created once this is up and running. The development will provide a significant and substantial increase in the tax base for the abhorrent tax purposes for the city. It's currently a empty parcel of land there. So, once you put this development on there, you have some nice increases in taxes for the city. Uh, in addition, sales taxes will be generated during the development when materials are purchased for the construction of the property. We believe that our rezoning request and application meet the requirements for the rezoning. All public facilities and infrastructure already there will not be negatively impacted. And we believe this development will be a real benefit to the community. As we mentioned, it'll have job creation and tax benefit increases for the city. And it's gonna be, gonna be done in a quality manner. And so, therefore, we just respectfully request that with the conditions mentioned, that our rezoning application be approved.
All right. We've got a question from Councilor Thomas.
Uh, Mr. Riley, uh, is this, uh, facility to be staffed? I know sometimes these storage facilities do have staff on the property. Uh, do you know if that's going to be a condition on this one?
I don't know that it's a condition. There is a, uh, an office shown on the development and that might be to be determined. I don't know, Mr. Kramer, is it planned? It will be staffed? The owner behind me says it will be staffed.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Riley, let's see if anybody wants to speak in favor or if anybody's opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any more comments. Mayor, we're gonna bring that back with the four conditions that have been added this morning by amendment, be on second reading, ready for a vote next week at the nine o'clock meeting.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor, the next item up, uh, Mr. Johnson may have a brief comment. This is a text change on the unified development ordinance to allow appropriate setbacks in the, uh, is it resource conservation subdivision? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, Will Johnson, Planning Department. Uh, we have in the UDO in chapter six, what is called a resource conservation subdivision. It is a tool you can use to do more compact development as you preserve more natural resources, historic resources, um, natural, uh, physical, uh, things like creeks and rock outcroppings and whatnot. So, we've had it since, uh, 2005 and here it is 2021 and we got our first one. It came in in 2020. We've been working on this since March 20th, March of 2020, right when the pandemic hit. We've sailed through. We've worked with engineers. We've, uh, done all of our due diligence. But then, when they came to, uh, turn in, uh, individual site plans for individual homes, our codes and inspections department caught, um, a part of the ordinance that is just not realistic. That part of the ordinance called for, and keep in mind, you're reducing lot sizes from the underlying zoning, uh, to preserve natural features. So, and the yield on this development is the same as if it was a typical RE1 development. But their lots are smaller, so they can move away from, again, the natural features. So, the ordinance allows them to do that, to reduce the lot sizes. But under other minimum lot requirements, it says, "Other than minimum lot area and lot width requirements, all minimum requirements of the zoning district of the subdivision site has to have the underlying setbacks." Well, the underlying setbacks for, um, RE1 is 50 feet off the front, 40 feet off the rear, 20 feet off the sides. But when you reduce a lot, you essentially leave a postage stamp big enough for a home site. So, what we have proposed is that other lot, minimum lot requirements, the setbacks shall be established in the preliminary plat, um, appropriate with the lot sizes. Again, it's just not, uh, realistic legislation that, it just cannot work, um, regardless of what the zoning district is. You can have the conservation subdivisions in any residential, uh, district. If it's in an SFR1 district and your lots get down to SFR4, this ordinance would make you have setbacks that meet SFR1, which again, leaves you with a postage stamp to put a house on. So, we're asking to change the legislation that, so it is, the setbacks are appropriate to the lot size.
Any questions around the table?
Yeah, Councilor Davis.
Mr. Johnson, have you been getting a lot of feedback from the building community, home builders and all about this? It's, uh, currently, uh, there's some matters of concern out there in the community.
Not really because, um, I did, from, from the one that is going on now, yes. From the Home Builder Association, no. Because again, as I said, this is the first one in the 16 years of this ordinance that we've had. Everybody else pretty much goes through conventional rezoning or uses the existing zoning and does conventional subdivisions.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Will, uh, help us understand how this will work. So, the preliminary plat will determine, uh, the setbacks. And then, that'll be between you and the developer, between planning and the developer as to what the appropriate setback should be for that lot.
Yeah, and their engineer and codes and inspections.
Okay. So, it'll be the staff here will enter into discussions and y'all will agree upon it.
Right.
Sir, okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay. Any other questions around the table or in the audience? All right. If not, we'll bring that back next week for a vote, Mayor, to amend the text of the UDO.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next item up, uh, I'm gonna call up Judge Mark DiAntonio from Probate Court. Appreciate his patience this morning. We've got a report from the Consolidated Government Districting Commission on new council district boundaries. And let Judge DiAntonio make a presentation. Then, we'll hear from Pam Hodge, Deputy City Manager, and any other interested parties. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney and, uh, Counselor. I wanna, I'm here today to present the district maps developed by the 2021, uh, I want to call it redistricting commission since we already had districts, but, uh, the charter refers to it as the districting commission. I wanted to sort of outline, um, what was my guiding principle and what I think the commission members saw as guiding principles to help inform how we settled on the map we settled on. Uh, we went through the alphabet from A to J, uh, in terms of trying to come up with maps. Well, my guiding principle was really to just focus on process. As a judge, my role is to make sure that everyone has notice and an opportunity to be heard. Uh, we met during the day. We met during the evening. We met on a Saturday. These, they were all televised. We also had input through a website that had an interactive map and allowed comments. So, I think I accomplished that part of it. I will say to y'all that because we were under a much tighter schedule than one would have hoped, but 2020 census was an interesting thing. 2020 was an interesting year. We really didn't get the data quickly enough to move as probably the charter had anticipated. And I know Mr. Faye may talk about that because the charter, uh, of when the elections are going to be held in 2022, the charter would prohibit us unless the elections are moved back from the May days right now, uh, from these maps going into effect until 2024. I'm sure Ms. Hodge can clarify that a bit. In terms of the, uh, committee's guiding principles, there were a number of competing principles that, um, really you had to sort of balance and give different weight to depending on which map we were looking at. Clearly, um, one of the things we had to do was follow the charter's constraints. The charter's constraints essentially made us make sure that the maps we were drawing were contiguous, compact, and well-defined by boundaries such as streets and things along those lines. Also, um, something that's very important to me and is referenced in the charter, one person, one vote. Uh, we strive to, and I think Ms. Hodge will go into more detail about that, to have an even distribution of population among the districts. I mean, you're always going to have give or take some on the margin and that's just a process here. We also felt equal protection was very important, uh, so as to not dilute minority representation. And there, again, nothing is perfect, but we worked through that. Also, and this is, um, made things more challenging perhaps, the school board and the, and the commission wanted to make sure that if at all possible, our boundaries for council people and board members would align. I know that actually makes our elections more efficient. And it's actually better for folks in the same neighborhood to know who their representatives are. However, the board, the school board is not bound by the same six-month requirement. So, to some extent, they, um, if they were not happy with how we were moving forward or, for example, if we were to, say, redistrict out one of the incumbent board members, they would lose their office immediately, I believe. And, uh, the school board could have gone back and done whatever they wanted to do. So, we were constrained to some extent by, uh, the school board and wanting to do, and wanting to keep our lines aligned, so to speak. That actually brings up something that I think there'll be probably some discussion about. Uh, another guiding principle was incumbent protection. And that's not the same as guaranteeing someone's gonna get elected forever. But a district commission that is an unelected body appointed with 17 people on it felt that we should not be the folks voting people out of their respective board, school board or council seats by moving districts, by gerrymandering. That to us, that would be contrary to what a democratic society, uh, would want. Basically speaking, the district commission decided if somebody needs to be removed from office, that should be left up to the people. So, with all these conflicting constraints, if you give a little to try to do a little bit more about equal protection, you might be compromising something else there. It's kind of like squeezing balloons. And I really have to thank everyone from the city that went through, uh, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Hodge, the entire, uh, city worked real hard on every time we wanted to say, "Well, what happens if we tweak this here or tweak that there?" We got more maps. Uh, the council did vote on December 4th. And at our meeting on December 4th, uh, the map that is proposed, that Ms. Hodge will go into more detail, uh, was approved on a vote of 15 to one. So, and our district commission, which, uh, is in the proposed ordinance, is a very diverse group of people. I think allowing everyone to have that opportunity to be heard is why we had such a nearly unanimous vote. At that, I will happily answer questions or turn it over to Ms. Hodge. Well, thank you.
Uh, good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Um, I'm just gonna go through some of the information that the, uh, districting commission reviewed, um, and just walk through kind of the basis of, um, how they evaluated the districts and then I'll walk through, uh, the map that they selected. We've provided you an actual report. It should be at your station. The actual report was included, um, this morning as well. It does have the maps in it. There is an interactive map that's on the city's webpage. If you go to the city's webpage, there's a yellow banner at the top of the city's webpage for the districting commission. There is an interactive map. You can look at all of the different scenarios that was provided to the commission. As Judge DiAntonio mentioned, we're on, uh, scenario J. So, they went from A through J. And this is the, um, map that they agreed upon. So, again, this is the commission members. There were 17 members. They were at almost every one of those commission meetings. They met, um, twice in October, three times in November, and then again on December 4th. And they did have a full board of commission on the December 4th when the vote was taken. I just want to point out that, as you know, a lot of Fort Benning is located in Muskogee County. So, this map shows, um, Muskogee County and then kind of highlights, uh, Fort Benning. When we look at the population, the 2020 census data, our population is at 206,922. Uh, we exclude the population on Fort Benning of 7,108. So, the commission was working with a total population of 199,814. This is the demographics from the 2020 census, um, broken out for the 199,814. This, we also provided to the commission so they could see what the census data and the demographics were for the 2010 census. So the population for the eight council districts, if you take the hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight fourteen divided by eight, you're at twenty-four thousand nine seventy-seven. So that was the target for each one of the council districts. And again, that target is an ideal population range, but there's no way for us to have that exactly meet. And so there is an allowance for one percent up or down, two hundred and fifty up or down from that target number. So the range was twenty-four thousand seven twenty-seven to twenty-five thousand two twenty-seven. So that was the population that should be in each district. And the other thing that we advised the commission, as we looked at where the current lines are, some of the districts were under the target number, some were over the target number, and there was one district that was within that target range, which was District Three. And the other thing you have to look at is when you're shifting those lines, you have to look at who's next to who, which districts are adjacent to the other districts. And so we walked through that process with the commission. So this is the map. This is Scenario J that was voted on by the commission. I'll walk through each one of the districts so you can see kind of a larger picture of each district. It is in your handout, it's in the report, and the interactive map, you can zoom in if you wanna see exactly which streets adjusted for each one of the districts. So this is District One. Most of that District One stayed intact. We added a portion up on the north end and a small portion on the south end to District One. So for the most part, not a lot of adjustments, and you'll see that in almost every district. There was just a few adjustments that had to be made. But we also looked at the demographics to make sure that there was not a lot of difference in the demographics as it exists in 2020 with the current lines and then in the proposed lines. This is District Two, one of the districts that did grow in population that was over the target, and so there were some population in District Two that had to be removed in order for District Two to remain within that target range. This is District Three, not a lot of changes. We had to make some adjustments up on the north side of District Three because it is adjacent to District Seven. District Seven lost population and we needed to add to it, so we had to take a little portion from District Three and then some from District Eight in order to make District Seven within the target. This is District Four, and again, most of District Four remained intact. There was a small portion that we needed to take from District Four to add to District Three on the south end of District Four. District Five, as you'll see in Five and Eight, because they are kind of the center city and more adjacent to more of those council districts, you'll see more adjustments in District Five and District Eight. And so there were some growth in District Five to the north because District Two was over that population target. And as you shifted District Seven into District Eight, then District Eight had to pull some from District Five. So there were some adjustments to District Five. District Six, again, was one of the districts that grew in population, and so a portion of District Six was shifted into District Five, and that was on the south end. And then there was a little portion on the north end of District Six that was shifted over to District Two, right there on the north end where it is contiguous with Harris County. District Seven, again, one of those districts that needed to grow, and so there was a portion from District Three on the east side, and then on the north side, portion from District Eight into District Seven. And then again, District Eight grew a portion into District Five, and then a portion of the south end of District Eight was added into District Seven, and then a small portion was added into District Three. And then I've also included in the presentation, so you can see the demographic information for each one of the districts, and just for the scenario that was selected, I do have the information on all the scenarios that we looked at. So this is District One, the existing district based on the 2010 census data, the existing district with the existing lines based on the 2020 data, and then Scenario J, so you can see, and I won't go through each one of these numbers, but you can see, we tried to look at a target number of plus or minus three percent. And in all the districts except for one, we were able to meet that target of three percent. So not a lot of adjustment in District One in the demographics. District Two, the item in red was just to show that that district was over the target number, so that district did have to shrink based on the existing 2020, 2020 lines, but not a lot of change in the demographic information. Going from twenty-seven thousand to twenty-four thousand percentage-wise, remained really close to the same. District Three, just some adjustments and very little shift in the demographic information. District Four, again, was over the target slightly, so there were a little bit of adjustments in District Four, but not a lot of change in the percentage of the demographics. District Five was under that target number, but in the end, still not a lot of change in the demographics once we made the adjustments to the map. District Six was over that target number, but again, we made some changes. And as we went through the scenarios, District Six was one of those that seemed to adjust quite a bit because it was over the target, but in the end, the demographic information is relatively close. District Seven was under the target number, and after we added, again, came back really close, about a percent and a half in the change in the demographics between black and white. And District Eight, unfortunately, District Eight is exceeding that three percent change that we were trying to target for. We made as many adjustments as we could to try to get District Eight's demographics into the, into that three percent range. And without removing an incumbent, we were not able to make those changes, and without shifting in other districts, it would throw that other district off. So we felt like this was as close as we could get based on all the guiding principles that we had and to make sure that the incumbents were not drawn out of their district. So again, this were the committee. I just wanna thank Will Johnson and Trey Wilkerson from the planning staff and Scott Evans from I T. They worked, and Lucy Schefdahl worked tirelessly with the commission to get all these maps to them and to all the meetings and, you know, work with the commission as best that we could. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on the, on the maps.
Mayor Protem Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, Pam, on the breakdown of the population. I think it's Slide Five. There's a category there that says two or more. What, what does that, can you clarify what that means?
When people will fill out their census data, if they selected two or more of the demographic categories, as far as race, then it would, it created a separate category for two or more.
Okay. Thank you for that. Mayor and City Manager, I, I wanna let you know that I have heard several times on numerous occasions, what a great job Pam and Will Johnson and the G I S staff did in putting all this together. There were some members of this district committee that had been there before and were familiar with the process, but there were others that were not. And they took the time to walk everybody through the system, and I just, I've watched a couple of the meetings on YouTube, and I couldn't be more proud of the process and and not to mention, I think Nancy Boren from Elections, the inputs, valuable input she added. But I, I'm just really proud of the process and the work and the great detail they put in, so I just wanted to commend them today for the work they did.
Well said. Counselor Tucker.
Yes, I wanna thank the commission. I know I was making a lot of requests behind the scenes, and it was on behalf of the constituents because I was concerned about transparency. And when I asked the question about us doing virtual, you know, I wasn't saying that we need to have a virtual meeting, but to actually put it out on, on YouTube, and Judge DeAntonio, he, and, and also the co-chair, Jerome Williams, they, they made it happen, and we were able to get it, you know, on CCG TV. So I just appreciate that you all were very attentive to the citizens because that's the whole, that's the whole purpose, is that we wanna be transparent. So thank you for taking my request on, you know, putting that on CCG TV, putting that on YouTube, and then having that comment, you know, card, and even though a lot of people did anonymous, you know, comments that you all read, and some of them was kind of out there. But thank you. You all did a great job. I appreciate all, all your hard work.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Huff.
Thank you to the commission and our team for everybody working so well together. It was, like I said before, it was a great process because I was running during the census in 2010, so at this point, coming up on a reelection campaign, it was interesting to follow the data and see where it led us. And for District Three to have been so perfectly grown over the past ten years was just phenomenal to me. It came out to, I guess, we lost about twenty-two, twenty-six people. And to watch it move around the eight districts in order to get it right for everybody, so the public that attended and the commissioners that worked it, I just say, great job. And we look forward to moving ahead, and I think these numbers, lines will kick in in 2024. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And is this sent to, forwarded on to the state?
Yes, so the next step before council can actually vote is we need to send this to the reapportionment office in the state for their certification, and then council will be able to vote at that point, and Mr. City Attorney might wanna add to that. But there's still a little bit of a process left before this is finalized.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
That's right. It, it does go on to the state, and barring any unforeseen action by the General Assembly, the old maps will still apply for mayor and council races in 2022, but they'll change after that.
All right, Counsel Barnes.
Justice Pam, thanks for the late-night phone calls and all the work. I know it was a juggling act. I know just what a difficult job, staying within the parameters and then guiding the commission members, and they did an awesome job. Many a phone calls. The, there's, there's no describing. I really, previously, ten years before, I didn't realize the amount of work that's involved in something like that, and the juggling act and the crunching the numbers and, but you guys did an awesome job. It was a, it was a, a learning experience for me, and had me deeply appreciate the amount of work that all of you and Judge, you're included in this here, of course, thank you for your efforts, keeping the ship sailing, sailing straight, and just appreciate the amount of effort. I was just saying, Mr. City Manager, the amount of effort that Pam put in and the, the hours, the long hours. I mean, and I can attest to the long hours, when I say long hours, and also the commission members, and so deeply appreciate all the, the work and the, that you put into it.
Thanks, sir.
Very good. All right, I think that's all.
Any other comments around the table? This is only first reading. We'll bring this back for an official vote next week at nine o'clock.
As long as it goes through the reapportionment office. If we get the certification from the reapportionment office, we have to have that first.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll have that certification next week. Next item up, Mayor, is the.
Oh, we've got, it's public.
All right. Give them your name and address for the record, please.
Teresa Alameen, thirty-nine eleven, Steamwell Road. I expect quite a few people to be speaking at this public hearing. I moved here on December sixth, two thousand ten, and I've been watching very carefully because Columbus is unique. I would say, based on the wonderful work that is being done by the planning department and the city manager's office, and I'm always impressed with Ms. Hodge. And Ms. Hodge, I would love a copy of your PowerPoint presentation that you presented this morning, lots of important information. The, the city council districts are racialized, and this was an opportunity to kind of address that. But more importantly, politicians should not get to choose their voters, Mr. Huff. I have a call into you, Mr. Huff, 'cause I was quite concerned about how much you were engaged in the process. Politicians should not get to choose their voters. When you say you are promoting incumbency, that's what you're promoting. Every community around this country is going through this process. Voters choose who they want to represent them. Politicians should not get to choose their voters. So when you're engaged so deeply into how the lines are drawn, that's what you are doing. You're getting to choose your voters. I am glad to see the demographics clearly put up district by district. When I look at one, three, four, seven, and I look at the faces, and I look at two, five, six, eight, and I look at the faces, that thing about six votes, interesting, two at-large seats, two, five, six, eight, two at-large seats. The city council of this Columbus Consolidated Government is racialized. This was an opportunity to address that. If you live in Midland, do you only represent people who live in Midland? Or do you represent people within the city limits of Columbus? Because when I look at the demographics of who lives where in these districts, the city council is racialized. So do you ever get past six white votes? Do you ever get past that, based on how the lines are drawn? So I am watching the process because I was in the Voting Rights Movement, and I was there for nineteen sixty-five. John Lewis is, was my friend. We need to protect our voting rights. When you consolidate governments, which is why the city of Durham and the county of Durham will always be separated, 'cause those black folks in Durham understand that you dilute the black vote when you consolidate the county, 'cause the county out there overwhelmingly white, and the city overwhelmingly people of color. So people in Atlanta would never consolidate. People in Durham would never consolidate. But in nineteen seventy-one, you consolidated the first, the first city in Georgia, you're very proud of that. But I know what that means to be a consolidated government. I know what it means, and I understand it. A few years after the Voting Rights Act passed, you came together, those who ruled this Macon-Dixon line-set-up city. That's what this is about. It's a missed opportunity for system change. That's what I'm seeing as a problem with the process as a human rights person. And by the way, Mr. Mayor, as I told you yesterday, I signed up for the public agenda. I hope you move me up, 'cause I cannot stay until after the clerk's agenda. What I have to say on the public agenda is a little bit more than an announcement, but I hope you. But I hope you understand what I'm saying about watching this process in this consolidated government. And I've watched what the districts are, 1, 3, 4, and 7. I know who you are. And when that business came up about the Liberty Theater, and all six of those votes, because it takes six votes, it takes six votes, and all six of those votes said no to the Liberty Theater proposal, three of the people of color said yes to it, Mr. Huff said he had his own idea. I've been watching this very carefully. You missed an opportunity. Redistricting is an opportunity for fairness. When you protect the incumbents, you're saying politicians get to choose their voters. It should be the other way around. Voters get to choose who they want to represent them, not politicians choosing their voters, Mr. Huff. It's a problem. It's a problem. And maybe one day, people will see what I see, because I think I'm correct. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think that's all, Mr. City.
Okay, don't see any other hands. Thank you, Mayor. We'll bring that back then for a vote next week at nine o'clock. Next item, Mayor, is the moratorium that was mentioned earlier. This is an ordinance imposing a 90-day moratorium on issuance of business license or certificates of occupancy for convenience stores with or without gas sales. It's up for discussion right now. Anybody have any comments around the table?
Yes, we've got a couple. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to hear from Counselor Barnes and Counselor Tucker on this issue if they would. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Tucker?
I can't remember what meeting it was, but we had a gentleman come up, I think it was Mr. Calhoun, in reference to putting up, I think it was a gas station. And from that discussion, it was, I think it was a it was a first reading. From that discussion, myself and Counselor Woodson mentioned the issues that we have in districts 4, 7, 3, and 1 in reference to these convenience stores slash gas stations that appear to have illegal gaming, gambling systems, machines. And unfortunately, you know, if if we don't get a hold of it, it's a safety issue because we know that they don't have the proper security, you know, to ensure these individuals are safe. And if you go to a casino and you're gambling, you have security in there. A lot of the senior citizens and veterans that I have been speaking to within my district, I actually had some meetings, and this was a concern of them saying that they don't feel safe going to some of those convenience stores within our neighborhoods because people, they just stand around. It brings a bad crowd into those areas. And it's just exactly what those individuals that came up earlier today was mentioning on Far Road, that they don't want to have these stores that brings crowds that, you know, appear to be unsafe and individuals. Sadly, I know in Bruce Huff's district, Counselor Huff's district, you have individuals out there with weapons, shootings, and murders in those in those convenience store area. And it's not just just Huff's district, it's my district as well. And in District 1 and District 7, in all fairness, it's about the safety, not only of the citizens, but the safety of those owners of those convenient gas stores or whatever the category is. It's about safety first. And we don't need to have another layer where we're possibly or potentially creating an unsafe environment. So it was just doing a 90-day study. We do know, and the sad thing is, I've had individuals go into the stores, and I can mention which stores they are. And and one of them is on Far Road, on the corner of Far Road and St. Mary's Road. And you can go in there and gamble and get money. You're not getting a prize as as would it said, but you're putting money in the machine just like if you were going to Watumpka, Biloxi, or Vegas, and you're getting money. So how do we legislate this and ensure that we're not doing, we're not allowing for illegal transactions to continue to transpire? And how do we get ahead of it just in case something occurs, you know, that's that's going to be tragic? And that that was my concern, is safety and also legality.
Thank you. Counsel Davis is next. Let me say very quickly just about the meeting. We were asked to set this up, and we had a meeting. The public safety was there, the police chief was involved, we had somebody from the lottery, we had our city attorneys, and I think, not speaking for them, but I believe what came out of that was to avoid a, you know, sort of a very reactionary action legislatively, to do a very short moratorium, just to study it and make sure if anything needs to be done, if there is, what should it be and to what level? Counsel Davis?
Yeah, Mayor, let me just say, first of all, I would have to define myself as being pro-business within within limits. And at the same time, some of these issues that are coming up here are concerns of mine too, within within limits. I think there's probably a number of arguments to this, that this is not the the first time that our community has dealt with this. There's a history here, and many people have been arrested, many people have gone to jail. I question if this is a law enforcement issue and a private property rights issue. And I'm concerned about the the message that it sends. If it's if it's just about a, you know, I'm more concerned about the basis, okay? For example, recently, there was a request to have one of these stores on Warm Springs Road. My argument was that it did not have adequate access and caused a a traffic hazard for many reasons. But I can't make the argument about something that's legal and is allowed to a private property owner or a business owner in the state of Georgia, which some of these matters that we're talking about are. There's really nothing you can do about it. Now, if they choose to go against the guidelines and they choose to do something that's illegal, then they're going to suffer the consequences if they get caught. I don't know how you regulate that. I don't know how government can go in and start regulating a private property business where somebody is abiding by the guidelines and the rules, which they're allowed. It's been going on for years. And then all of a sudden, we question that. And I'm really, I just bring this up to say that I do have some concerns. And a lot of these matters that we talk about are are conversation pieces of support for legalized gambling. So it it does raise some concerns, but like I said, I just want the members around this council to know that, you know, that that I am pro-business within limits. And I am not for the gambling aspect that we're talking about here, but again, I've been involved in that in the past, and it becomes a law enforcement matter. I don't know how you would regulate security on these properties. I don't know how you would regulate the way that they do business. I just I just question that. So that is a concern of mine. And, you know, as far as what is happening, problems, I'm totally against that. I think everybody knows where I stand on that. I don't like how it feeds on the poor. I don't like how it affects the quality of life of those in low-income areas. I don't like that. And it does. It does. It's a fact. Statistics show that. So that's not right. And, you know, we realized in the past in working with law enforcement, it's very hard to catch this type of activity, very hard to catch this activity. But the same type of activities in the state, you know, the state allows and supports other aspects, whether it's education or or matters that that these, quote, proceeds that the state collects directs. So I just, I'm trying to add all that up and at the same time, be sensitive to the request of my fellow council members.
Okay, any other questions around the table or comments? We'll bring this, all right, Counsel Crabbe?
Thank you, Counselor Davis. And that's the main reason why I wanted to do a moratorium. And actually, I spoke with a few business owners who provided some some advice and some advice that I will share. And I know Counselor Crabbe basically mentioned the same thing that I spoke about with a business, a very well-known businessman in the in the community that I truly trust, and I appreciate his advice to figure out a way that we can look at the possibility of putting a moratorium on just the the gaming system, putting the lotteries in the stores, just like Counselor Huff was saying in reference to the convenience store, that potentially will possibly, if they do, on Far Road, to not have have the the gaming systems in there. But the the whole purpose of this moratorium is to slow down, do a study. I do think that it is ways for us to actually come up with some solutions and work with our law enforcement, work with the chief of police, work with the city attorney to get an actual plan of action, because across the state of Georgia, they are having the same issue, and they are doing these same things, and not only in Macon, in Newton County, in other counties with my commissioner friends, because that's what I do when I go to these trainings, is I talk with my fellow commissioners. And this is not a issue only in Columbus, Muskogee County, it's throughout the state. And I just want us to get ahead of it and not be reactive, but be proactive. So that's that's all this is.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel Crabbe?
Thank you. I have a few questions. Why do we need a moratorium to do a study? Why can't we just do the study?
Because you're going to continue to get, just like this person came and wanted to a store, you're going to get more, so stop it, just like you stopped the the issue of the personal care home.
Okay, but we're, but as the mayor has already said, that anything that's already in the system, that's in the rezoning system, it's going to go through. So there's already things lined up in order to come through. This moratorium is not going to affect them, and by the time they get through the system, you know, the 90 days would be up. So, I mean, why do we need a moratorium to do a study? We could continue to, we could do the study without the moratorium. I'm a I'm a business-friendly person. I mean, we need to not discourage business in our city. It's what pays, it's 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 what we do as a city. We we need businesses to serve our to serve our citizens, to pay the taxes, pay for the licensing fees. That is how we we exist. And so I I think we could do this study, and I'm all for the study, 100%. I'm, I also have a question. Can the lottery machines be a condition that we add to the rezoning? Can, is that legal?
Well, you may be able to do some limits on machines through zoning conditions, but that's something that the police chief and the state lottery officials wanted to look at when we talked to the mayor last time around. That's a possibility through zoning conditions.
Okay, so I guess my concern here is this. Why are we trying to punish businesses that are doing it right? Let's focus on the problem at hand, which is the lottery machines.
And I'm gonna say this, Counselor Crabbe. The same way we put a moratorium on personal care homes in reference to some issues that we had, you halt a process. That way, you don't add or flood in more applicants and then have to address those as they're coming in. So you stop it. Attempt to come up with a plan of action. That way, we can roll out, this is the new process. That way, we can roll out, hey, we're not going to have this many machines. Whatever the case is, it's 90 days. It's not a long time. That's the reason why it's a short amount of time for us to come up with a plan of action and then that we can start accepting the applications. It's not going to hurt businesses. It's not going to hurt. It's 90 days.
It sets, it sets a precedent. It sets a message to business that we are not friendly. We should be looking for different ways of doing this with and still come across as we are friendly to business. This, when you put a moratorium on, okay, so we start, we start here with a moratorium on gas stations or convenience stores?
No, we didn't start, start with that, because we actually started with personal care homes that set a precedent, that we we're not concerned about kids needing a place to stay or elderly people having a place to stay. We are concerned about the constituents, the citizens, the safety. That's what our concerns are. We care about business owners, but we care about our citizens that have to live, eat, sleep, and breathe in those neighborhoods. That's what we care about.
Right. And but I don't see us, we can still be doing the study without without putting a moratorium on, the study is what is important for the safety of the citizens. That does not need a moratorium in order for us to do that.
Well, this is this is on first reading, and I think you're both correct in one sense. One is that we have done moratoriums before. I can think about the scooters, I can think about the personal care homes, and we've used this as a tool just to sort of hit the pause button. However, Counsel Crabbe is correct, we can continue, and I would imagine these counselors will continue to pursue an answer with or without the moratorium. Moratorium, I think, simply is a tool that's been utilized in the past just to hit the pause button.
I'd like to see us focus on these lottery machines. I'd like, I mean, I I know that Chief Blackman is in the audience. I'd love to hear his comments on on how we can control some of this illegal activity that's happening around these lottery machines. I agree with you 100%, Counselor Tucker, 100%. It's a problem, and we need, I just don't think this is the solution.
And and the reason why this was the solution, because this has been the solution in the past. We have done it, exactly what the mayor just said, in reference to the scooters, in reference to the personal care homes, over and over and over again. It's a tool. We use tools that are in our toolbox to actually address issues, and this is a tool. This is a tool. That's that's all it is, is a 90-day moratorium. It's not saying a year, it's not saying two years or anything. It's It's a brief pause, a brief pause.
All right, we'll.
The difference in those two examples that you used, the moratorium on the scooters were, there were no scooter businesses in town already. There was none. And so, we, it's not like we were stopping something that was already here.
We got personal care homes.
Secondly, personal care homes, I don't consider those a business. I consider those a service. I mean, I do know that some people were taking advantage of them and turning them into a business, which...
It's a business. I mean, anything that, that brings in, whether it's nonprofit or for-profit, when you sign and you have a business license, it's a business.
We, this is on first reading. We've got, we've got time to kind of discuss it. And Chief Blackman, to my recollection, was in that meeting. But we also had the Lotto security individual there. And we discussed, that's why it's a little bit intertwined, because there was some discussion about, you could issue a citation, but what will a citation do? And then there was some discussion about what role does the lottery play in this? So, there are a lot of moving parts, but we, we've got a week, I think, to kind of...
I would like to hear those things before we vote on this.
Well, we, we can, we can try to give you a, a synopsis of it. But, but anyway, I, I, any other comments from you two? I've got a couple others lined up. All right, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I, um, in trying to think through this, you know, I'm questioning if this is, this is probably a state matter and not a local matter, because I think state law is going to supersede over all this. And alcohol is regulated, heavily regulated. The Lotto machines are, are heavily regulated. These, whatever you want to call them, slot machines, whatever, they're, they're regulated. The convenience stores are probably more heavily regulated than most businesses that you would consider. So, you know, Mr. City Attorney, I'm, I'm wondering the legality of this. You know, I don't know anybody right now that would suffer harm, but certainly, if I was on the other side, I'd be considering class action. And I, I, I'm not, because the, the state allows all this stuff, and you're somewhat taking a, a right to do business away from, from many individuals. For what reason?
Well, you can do a moratorium to prohibit the issuance of business licenses on a particular category.
For what reason?
Just to study the issue, just like you did with personal care homes, just like you did with scooters. I mean, you can do it. I wouldn't recommend going beyond 180 days, and this one does not. This is 90 days only. And it's certainly legal to do it. It's a policy matter, you know, whether you want to put that pause on or not.
Well, I, you know, the interior of, of, of the, the operation of a business is one thing that I'm hung, you know, concerned about. If it's more of an exterior thing, where it becomes traffic hazards, where these things go, how the access, uh, uh, traffic hazard, all those kind of things. If we're going to look more in depth of how we're going to go in the direction from a zoning standpoint, uh, uh, you know, that would be a different story. But I, I would think if there's a concern on some of these matters that I'm hearing, I, I don't, you know, I'm trying to...
All right, thanks, sir.
Yeah, maybe this is an item that needs to be put on the legislative agenda and, and, and taken care of at, at a state level. But I'm not sure what's going to come out of this, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm questioning. Uh, but at the same time, I'm very, as I said, I'm very sensitive to my colleagues' concerns. I am. Because I don't agree with what is described as far as some of these operations within Columbus. It's illegal, uh, what we're talking about. But to me, that's a law enforcement issue. And, I, I, you know, it, it's very, it's very hard to, to, to catch this kind of activity and, you know, and, and do something about it. If we want to, if we want to, I, I think we can tighten and toughen the local laws that if you get caught and you're in violation, I mean, we can drop, you can make it where you get the drop, hammer dropped on you. But I, I, I don't see anything that we can do in stopping the right to operate these businesses that the state allows. That's, that's, that's my concern. And on the legality side, I'm concerned about it as well.
Well, those are fair comments. I'm just telling you, as a body, you can impose a moratorium for a short period of time on any category of business if you're trying to study issues related to that business.
Counselor Barnes?
Oh, I'm sorry for having a sidebar. I think we're all in agreement that it is a problem. We do have a problem here. The problem is how to use skin to can. Uh, because we have used in the past moratoriums, and this is such a defined time, it's not forever, um, Councilor Crabbe broke up, brought up the consideration to the business owners, and that's a good thing. That's not a bad thing. But what about a consideration for this, for the citizens? I think it sends a message to the citizens. We are, to the business owners, we are sensitive, what you're saying, but also to the citizens. We are sensitive. We're taking a defined time, not forever, a defined time to discuss an issue that we do realize is sensitive to you. So, I see no fault in this council taking the time to do that, because it sends a message to the citizens. We have heard you. We realize that this is a problem. And we are going to give it a discussion as we have issues in the past. So, I don't think that it's anything that extraneous, that we can't do something like that. We have a defined time, a moratorium. It's not going to affect that many businesses wanting to come in. We're just halting everything. And if anything else that it accomplishes, it lets the citizens that we represent know that no matter what your strategy in this citi, in this city is, we are sensitive to what your concerns are.
Thank you, Counselor Garrett?
I, I have no problem with us, you know, putting a stop to something that is bringing crime in our community, which I do think some of these, these Lotto machines are doing. The only thing I want to bring to council's attention as a lawyer is that there's a very, very big distinguishing difference between the personal care homes and convenience stores. Convenience stores have a much higher standard for zoning purposes. They have to go through many thresholds. The reason that we chose to put a moratorium on the personal care homes is because, basically, you could have a much lower zoning in a residential neighborhood, and one of those homes could be stuck there without much, much if any approval by us. And we were having criminal issues related to those personal care homes. Uh, I don't think there's anything wrong with this council taking positions on moratoriums, but I think we do need to know that there is a bit, very big difference between what we have done in the past, where we were preventing something that basically was an automatic approval. If you had a certain residential zoning, you could put in a personal care home. In this type of situation, there are a lot more hoops to go through. You got to go through your district councillor, get their approval, community meetings. You've got to have special, uh, things granted for alcohol to be granted, to be allowed. So, I just want everybody to know that this is not an apples-to-apples comparison here. The, for personal care homes, those are apples that easily fall from the tree. For convenience stores, you got to tug those from the tree, and you got to fight with a lot of people to get those put in, put where you want them. So, I do want everybody to know, I'm okay, I, I, I do see the issues we have with the gambling that occurs with these. But I do think it could be a slippery slope if we do just moratoriums across the board when there's already a very strict criteria in place where we can reject them. I, I just want people to be aware of that, because personal care homes is not the same. It is distinguishable. But that's all I want everybody to know.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Huff?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. I just wanted to address Counselor Tucker's, uh, comment about it being a convenience store Lotto for the project this morning. I'd like the minutes to reflect that it was not a convenience store, not any Lotto machines coming in. The project was a completely different project, which the constituents still opposed. And we will meet, but I just wanted the records to reflect that it didn't fall under this category. So, whatever we do this morning, that project has nothing to do with this. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that's all from the council. Does anybody else have? Anybody in the audience have a comment? It's first reading.
Got one right here.
Just states your name and your address, please, sir.
Good morning, uh, city councilor, mayor, Mr. Attorney and city manager. My name is Charlie Desai. I live on 311 Double Churches Road. I see, uh, uh, there is a, a issue with it. But to put all the convenience stores with gas, without gas lumped into one is one issue that I see. And secondly, to stop the CO and the business license, that means the person has already spent all the money, did the work accordingly to the plan, was submitted a year ago to the city. It's been approved, uh, what goes on according to the codes. And when it falls under 90 days, how would someone make the payment in the first 90 days and be going out of business if you don't issue the license to that business?
Yes, sir. And to be clear, uh, anything that has even been submitted to planning, let alone something that's almost constructed, would not apply. This, this moratorium would not apply. So, if you had something about to open, you were just waiting to get the, the final inspections and the CO and the business license issued, you could continue to do that. This just means if you are about to buy a piece of land and you want to start the process, that would be restricted for 90 days, which really wouldn't impact you, because it's going to take you 90 days to get to a point where you'd need that anyway.
But if you buy the land and start the process, 90 days would be over before the person ready to open.
And you'd work that through the planning division. So, I, I, you know, I, I think the only people this would impact is anybody who is just about to finalize something within the next week or two. But that, but it would not buy, it would not restrict anything, Mr. City Attorney. I hope I'm being accurate. You might want to put in lawyer terms, but anything already in motion is going to continue in motion.
Thank you.
Right. Any application that's in the pipeline now will not be affected. So, this is only for new applications after the effective date. If it's voted next week, that would be the effective date.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Gopatil. What about the existing business? Like, if I want to buy next month, my bank loan is going on right now. And next 20 days, they're going to approve me? So, I have to apply for the existing business gas station? I can buy it? So, can I apply for that or not?
Wouldn't affect an existing operation, would it? If it changes hands?
The application is the key, whether they've applied for a license or a CO. So, that, that's the date that you would look to.
Mr. City Manager?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think his question centers around a transfer of ownership. He may sell to someone else. And it's simply a transfer. And I think that's his question. He's got something going through the process at the bank financing the transfer of ownership. And if you do this moratorium, is that going to affect him coming in to get the business license under his name? Because now I've just bought it from person A. And, and I think that's his question.
Not, not if he applies for the transfer before the vote of council, the effective date.
Well, I, I, I think, um, I've stayed out of this, this conversation. Uh, but, but I, I would, um, urge you to, um, um, draft, to, to consider what he has put on the table in terms of transfer of ownership.
Now, that, that's the way the, the case law works. It's the date of the application for a transfer, for a new license, or for the CO, whatever it is at that location. If he's already applied for a transfer, then this ordinance will not affect him.
I haven't applied so far, because I'm waiting for a bank loan. So, maybe next week or next 10 days, I can apply for the CU and all stuff.
That's just, that's just the way the law falls.
So, the short answer is yes, it would impact.
It would impact him if he does not apply before the effective date.
Unless, as the city manager suggested, there was some kind of, something written into the moratorium.
Well, you can, you can always, you can always put in a delayed effective date, but that's going to defeat the purpose of your moratorium, mayor. So, that's, that's up to council.
It, it is. I, I don't know. I hear his concern and, um, I, I, I don't want to hurt a business where you... If I'm going to buy a business from you, and I'm going through my loan process, and I have not applied because I'm waiting for my loan to be approved, and it gets approved, I want to move forward with my transaction. And based on what you anticipate doing on second reading, it would hinder him from moving forward with his transaction. I believe he should be able to move forward with this transaction.
Uh, it's agreed. But the way it's written right now, without any amendment, it would impact.
That's right.
Well, I, um, that's not, it's not my debate, so I, I will keep my thoughts to myself.
All right, Counselor Davis?
Well, would the answer to that question that the gentleman's bringing up would be yes. And, and it would be a damage, because it's affecting his ability to make a transaction with livelihood.
Yes.
That's a damage.
Yes, thank you.
And not only that, but did you mention, I'm, I don't know, but these, if, if you want to have, I know your alcohol license every year has to be renewed, not only locally, but state, some of the other requirements, probably on gasoline, probably, I don't know these machines that we're talking about. Is there a license on that too as well, annually?
Only gas station. It's my, I'm buying, purchasing gas station.
Do we know the answer to that? Is there a license that, on these machines that we're talking about? Is it annual that you have to apply, you have to go through that process as well?
I don't...
No, machine is, uh, machine not apply right now.
Is, is that, um, why don't you come, Ivan Ivy? Why don't you come forward, Ivan? I, I need to hear from Ivan Ivy. Oh, would you step back? Tell them who you are and answer that question.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Yvonne Ivy, and I'm the revenue manager for the finance department, revenue division. And we process and issue business licenses for the city of Columbus, Georgia. In reference to your question about the gaming machines, they, each, each of those gaming machines, they do have to have a sticker from the state of Georgia. The state of Georgia regulates those gaming machines.
Is that an annual license or requirement?
They do it annually, yes, sir.
So, during this time period, if they're up for renewal?
I don't know what their renewal date is. I can find the information.
I don't either, but during this timeframe, the question is, will it affect or impact the business?
Yes, sir. And I do know the gaming commission, they would contact our office and see, um, any information. If they're looking at a particular establishment, they would contact our office and see what type of license that they hold. And, um, what, where they use that information, that's up to them. But I know they do investigative works all the time.
If, if you don't get your application and requirements in, in time when there's a moratorium, I mean, from a state perspective, how is that going to affect the operation?
This ordinance does not affect the state grant of a license for a gaming machine. This only affects the local business license or certificate of occupancy.
Right. The only thing that, as far as what we request from a business that's trying to open a gasoline, a convenience store with or without gasoline, and I'm not talking about alcoholic beverages either, they would need to present to us an approved certificate of occupancy from the inspections and codes office. They have to... They have to present to us an approved, um, uh, inspection report from the Agriculture Department, where, in which the Agriculture Department has approved them for licensing. And based on those two documents, we can process and issue that business license. We do not get involved as far as like if they have gaming machines and they are not, that's strictly handled by the state of Georgia. Just like if they sell cigarettes, that's strictly handled by the state of Georgia because the state of Georgia also, also issue, uh, state licenses for cigarette sales. So.
Well, Ms. City Attorney, these, these are, it brings up questions from that standpoint of how their ability, if we say you cannot do business for ninety days, then you can't get your license.
Not a local one, no, sir.
And even if you do get it, you can't do business. So, I mean, would an amendment to this for certain situations like we're talking, discussing here, would that be appropriate?
Like I mentioned before, if you want to, if you want to put in a delayed effective date, say for thirty days on this ordinance, you can. But that's going to defeat the purpose of your ninety day moratorium. So it's a policy decision that you're going to have to make, whether you want to delay the effective date or not.
Can you put in amendments that would allow a transa, a transaction of a property sale and continuation or grandfather, people already doing business that's subject to their license being renewed during this ninety day period?
I, I wouldn't recommend that because any grandfathering is already accomplished by operation of law. If they have applied for a local license, this ordinance does not affect them. If they have not, then it would affect them.
Well.
So I don't recommend any amendments on, on, you know, transactions that we can't even foresee what's going on.
You're answering my question and concerns during that period, no, they can't. But everybody knows that if you do it before you get it in, like the request for rezoning today, that you can do it, or after you can do it, depending on what it is, but my concern is in the period.
If you delay, if you delay the effective date thirty days, then anybody's bank transaction that's finalized within the next thirty days, they can come apply.
Will you think the bank's going to agree to do it if there's a moratorium?
I, I can't answer that one.
Ms. Mayor?
Well, I think clearly there's, there's some unintended consequences that, which is why you have a first reading, which is why you start hashing it out. And I think that, um, it's, it's certainly up to council. And I think as it's presented now, it, it does open the door for some, uh, issues that were unforeseen. And, uh, I think we've got to, until the next meeting to be able to look at, to determine if there are any types of amendments or some other caveats we could put in that it might be, might be more palatable to council. But, uh, yeah, I think we use the next week or two to try to figure out if that, that's a, if that's a possibility. Do you have anything else?
Well, I, I, I was, you know, it's, obviously there is a lot going on around the table and, uh, and, and I said I wouldn't share my thoughts, but I, I heard Counselor Garrett and I heard the comparison of the, the boarding homes or, and, and scooters and, and this matter. And, and I think Counselor Garrett said it well, how they are different issues. But then I, 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 what Freddie Broome from GMA says is thundering in my ear because I heard him talk about one size not fitting all and you can order all medium shirts and there's equity. But, um, how do you include and, uh, and, and so, you know, with what we're dealing with here is, is somewhat different. I guess one thought would be, of course, you can do the moratorium, that's one option. But another option, uh, might be to, um, to, to not do a moratorium and step up enforcement and send out the warning that over the next ninety days, while if there's no moratorium, know that regarding gambling machines, we are stepping up enforcement over the next ninety days because, until the study is done. And so maybe you're going to get surprise visits where there are gambling machines. You're on notice. If you got gambling machines, uh, we're stepping up enforcement over the next ninety days. And, um, and, and so, and during that time period, there's going to be, uh, the study and then the results of the study released. That's just one thought, one option because I, I think it will, I, I heard Counselor Davis and his concern about pro-business and it impacting businesses. Heard from the gentleman here and from Counsel Crabbe and others, and I think there's mixed, a lot of different thoughts and opinions. And that's just my thought, um, about, um, one way to do, one thing to do while you do the study is, is, um, if you put these businesses on notice and the community on notice, if you're visiting and you're gambling and you're there in the next ninety days while we're doing the study, just know we're coming. And I think that's a warning sound enough that will cause people to do better over the next ninety days. That's my thought, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
Many of you around this table know that, um, I'm a stickler for words. And what this proposal says is that any new convenience store, any new convenience store with or without gasoline, it does not say in this piece of, uh, that's brought to us today, lottery tickets or, or, um, machines. It says any new govern, convenience store can't go into business if this moratorium is in place. I would suggest to you that, given the conversation around this table, this particular item needs a lot more attention than what has been, uh, what has been translated to us here. I, I am not for saying to anybody out there who wants to open a convenience store that doesn't have gas and doesn't have these machines, you can't do that, but that's what this says. Any new convenience store. So, um, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, that we've, uh, we've talked about this for a good while this morning and perhaps what we need to do is to come back at our next meeting with some of these, uh, issues addressed. I cannot support a, uh, an item that says you cannot have a convenience store whether or not you meet some of these other criteria. So.
No, fair enough. Counselor Tucker?
I did want to ask a, a question in reference to the new convenience store versus a transfer. If his business is already operating, would that be a transfer or would that be new?
Um, for a general business license, we do not transfer licenses. The only type of licenses that we transfer are alcoholic beverage licenses. For the type, for the situation that this gentleman is talking about, he would be considered a new applicant. Because even though that's an existing business, to us, that would be a new application, so therefore he would not qualify to put an application to us under this new moratorium.
Mayor Protem?
Not sure who to ask this question to, but I just wanted to ask, how are the, um, gaming machines regulated? Are they, is that a state controlled?
Yep, that's purely state enforcement.
So we could, we put, we couldn't put a special exception in requiring that to be approved by the city? If they're, if they are seeking a gaming?
No, the state law says what's a legal amusement device and what is an illegal gambling device. I mean, we cannot deviate from that.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, it'll come back next week in its present form unless there's some communication with the City Attorney's Office.
It'll be back on second reading next week and subject, subject to further amendment or modification. Counselor Tucker has a question.
I'm sorry. Uh, just Counsel Crabbe first.
Is it possible to bring this back, to make some amendments to it and bring it back as a first reading? Or I'm, I'm really, I'm asking that question.
As long as the three sponsors agree to whatever the amendments are, or you can propose a new ordinance with an amendment to bring back. Sure.
Counselor Tucker?
Um, I wanted to take in consideration what Counselor Thomas mentioned about, in reference to the, I guess it's the lottery machines or gaming or whatever the, um, correct language should be to add that within the, um, the moratorium.
I don't know how we're going to do that. The state regulates what is a legal machine and what's an illegal machine. All you can regulate is a business license for a convenience store, a medical office, you know.
But, but, uh.
Right. I mean, if it's illegal under the state law now, that machine, then our police and the state enforcement people can go issue a citation.
So we can't put in there that if they, um, want it, well, if a new applicant is putting in a conven, for a convenience store with or with gas, um, we can't put any language in there that they can't have the, the machines in there? We can't put that language in there?
The machines that are legal are permitted by state law. They're called amusement, coin-operated amusement devices. And it's up to that owner whether they go apply to have those machines in their business. They've got to get that permission through the state. You just, you don't have the authority to regulate the placement of those devices.
No more questions. Ms. City Attorney, I think you've heard a lot of concerns and, and maybe there's some recommendations you can make between now and next week that will incorporate some of the, some of the comments around the table.
You can certainly think about a delayed effective date, like I said before. We'll bring it back then on second reading as is. Okay. Next item we have, Mayor, is an ordinance that lists the roadways approved for speed detection devices, radar on Georgia Department of Transportation routes and non-GDOT routes in Columbus. This is an annual approval. Our engineer is here if there are any questions around the table. Wouldn't be voted on until next week. Any questions on this item?
Doesn't appear to be any.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Newman, for being here. We'll vote next week. Next two items involve no parking restrictions. First one is for the north and south sides of Double Churches Road, going from Northfield Drive, uh, area to Peppercorn Drive is, any questions around the table? The engineer is here on this as well.
Counselor Davis?
Yes, I, I'm going to ask for a delay on this matter and until I can look at it a little bit closely, closer, uh, this, this is the first that I've, I've become aware of this. So I, I really want to look at this a little bit closer before we move forward, so I'm asking for a delay.
So what's, what's the specific delay, till first meeting in January or the fourth Tuesday?
You can bring, second, second, you can bring it back on second meeting in January.
So the fourth Tuesday in January?
All right, there's a motion from Counselor Davis, the second, from Mayor Protem to delay until January. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, it'll be delayed.
All right, we'll delay that first reading until that fourth Tuesday. Item ten is the no parking. This would involve Wenton Road, uh, at two locations and Linwood Boulevard at two locations. Oh, man, correct me if that's not right, Ms. Newman.
Yes, I'd like to correct that. Um, really all we're doing is removing the parking restriction on Twelfth Avenue just north of, um, Linwood. It, the nineteen forty's ordinance included five different locations, which Wenton was one of those, Linwood was one of those. But we're, all we're seeking today is just to remove the restriction on Twelfth Avenue. Apparently, when it was, uh, put into place, there were two businesses and there were some parking and there was a conflict between the two, but, Wade's now owns both sides of the, um, right away there and they are requesting the removal of that parking restriction. It, it's right there, um, by Wade's Cleaners, right off of Linwood. You have their printing. Correct, correct.
Okay, so with respect to Wenton, this is housekeeping and the.
It just says, those other conditions remain in effect.
Linwood would be twelfth and Dudley.
We have a question for Counsel Garrett?
Not, not a question. I just talked with the, the folks who wanted this from Wade Cleaners and they'd been using this for parking for many, many years. So this is just really a clerical thing.
Okay, we will bring that one back then next week for a vote, Mayor. The last item we have is the ordinance amending the budget for FY twenty-one. Got our finance director, Ms. Alexander here, for a few comments. This is a year in action and we've got new funding, of course, from coronavirus, coronavirus relief funds and the American Rescue Plan, uh, fund money, among others. Can you turn? All right.
All right. Uh, good morning. Um, this is again, um, really one of those housekeeping items. At the end of every fiscal year, uh, we come back to council with a final budget amendment for the fiscal year that we're closing out. And that, um, just really becomes necessary, uh, throughout the course of the year. There are adjustments made to departmental budgets by council action. If we see where departments is going, a department is trending to go over budget due to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine, we have to incorporate those items. And so this is, um, the final budget, budget amendment being presented, uh, to council today. There is no, uh, significant changes in terms of the budget, particularly in the general fund. Um, there were, there were, um, three departmental budgets, um, that were over, um, the City Attorney's Office due to the litigation expenses, firing EMS, uh, because of auto parts and supplies, uh, the Coroner's Office due to, uh, temporary labor wages. And then our non-departmental, um, department, which, which accounts for our bad debt allowances and, um, some of those, uh, other commitments that we have, um, such as the BTW commitment that we, um, had to pay out of the general fund this year as well as a, um, transfer to the CARES Act Reserve, um, fund. So those were the only, uh, departments that were over. Like I said, those departments did come before council throughout the course of the year when they were trending, uh, to be over budget. And so, again, no significant adjustment to the budget for the general fund, with the exception of the transfer to the CARES Act Fund that was, that's coming out of the CARES Act reserves. And so, all the other overages were pretty much covered by departments that were under budget. So this particular fiscal year, we're adding to the fund balance. There is an update on the city manager's agenda that'll speak more specifically to that.
Mr. City Manager?
And, and, Mr. Mayor, I hate to make this request, but there is an update on my agenda that I think would fit in nicely with this finance report that she's given or this budget amendment. And I would ask that she go ahead and talk about that at this time so that council members will get the bigger picture regarding the finance.
Sure, right.
Well.
No, it's gotta be, no, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, it's very, very important, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So if there are no questions on that at this time, she wasn't prepared for this, but.
Well, I have my presentation.
I want to transition into this financial condition of the city. I think it's proper and fitting.
All right, are there any questions on item 11, though, the first reading of the ordinance?
And we'll bring that back, of course, next week for a final vote and it ties in with what Mrs. Alexander is gonna discuss.
Okay.
So as the city manager mentioned, we are, the fiscal conditions for FY '21 really ties into the final budget amendment that will be back for a vote next week. And so, this chart that you see before you in the first slide of the presentation is just our fund balance history. This table just shows a fund balance as of the last 14 years. You can see, just from looking at the chart here, where our fund balance took a significant hit in 2014. That was due to the changes in our long-term notes receivables and loans receivables in accordance with the GASB standard. And then it really sort of bottomed out in FY '16 at 54.54 days. But I can report that as of today, now, we are really close to being done with the audit. It's not complete yet. It is near final, it's in the final stages of completion. But I am confident in the numbers being presented here today for FY 2021 in terms of the general fund balance, with the general fund ending at 67.67 days and the OLOS fund ending at 50.24 days for a total of 117.91 days in our general fund reserves. So as it relates to the general fund balance history here, this is, this chart just shows a percentage of the fund balance as it relates to the composition for OLOS and general funds. Again, as you can see, the general fund portion of the fund balance significantly declined from 2008 to 2016, where it really sort of bottomed out, again, at that 54.54 days. However, in FY '17, we really started reversing the declining trend there and, again, also changing the makeup of our fund balance composition by increasing the portion that was relative to the general fund. So this chart here, it obviously is not a reflection of all the revenue sources throughout the government, but this, these represent the top six revenue sources that really made a, that really had a significant variance in terms of the budget to actuals here. And so, obviously, you know, some of these revenue sources have been recognized in the FY '22 budget. You know, we, there's a considerable amount of time left in the preceding fiscal year as we're projecting the upcoming fiscal year. And so, you know, some of these actuals, you know, are a little outstanding, actually. You know, some are based on, you know, conditions that happen locally in terms of the consumers and the citizens and their activity throughout the community. But some, you know, increases in those revenue sources were due to factors really beyond our control. And so we'll talk more about those top three in more detail later. But, again, this just shows the six largest budget-to-actual variances here, with title of alarum taxes being budgeted at $4 million. Us actually receiving about $11.3, that difference being $7.3 million. Sales taxes, that difference being $7.1 million. Occupation taxes, having a budget-to-actual variance of $1.4 million. Then there's $960,000 for property taxes, $800,000 for insurance premiums, and $730,000 for recording intangibles. So really sort of talking about those title of alarum taxes here, this chart just shows a three-year history of the tax itself. We collected in FY '09 just over $320,000 in title of alarum taxes. FY '20, it was 9.2, and for FY '21, it was 11.3. Again, the budget that we estimated was based on what we collected, you know, up to that particular point in time where we were developing the budget, plus what we collected for the remainder of FY '20. And somehow, we still wound up receiving more than $11 million in title of alarum taxes. This is about a 23% increase over FY '20. But the increases here, part of the reason why it's really so significant is because of changes in state legislature, where they discontinued the true-up, the birthday tax true-up. And so now, all of the title of alarum money is reported to the general fund. Also, the state changed the local allocation from 51%, just over 51% to 65%. So we are able to keep more of those dollars here locally than those being dispersed to the state. Sales tax collections here, this chart just shows it by fiscal year and you can really see how those collections really sort of ebbed and flowed over the last 14 years. We've been on an upward trend in our sales tax collections since FY '18 and surprisingly, it's steadily increased throughout the pandemic. You know, collections for FY '21 ended up being about 12% more than FY '20. This is about $4.5 million in additional revenue we received. That is excluding the one-time audit revenue. So that was, you know, really sort of outstanding in terms of our sales tax collections there. With the audit monies, we collected about $45.2 million in sales taxes for FY '21. For occupation taxes, again, this has steadily increased over the last four fiscal years, even as brick-and-mortar businesses have, you know, closed down in some cases. I think this is a testament, though, to some degree, with how consumer shopping trends have changed with more online shopping. The state did implement an internet sales tax in 2019. And so I do, you know, anticipate, as we see the changes and increases in sales taxes, will also have some impact to the occupation taxes here. And again, the, you know, the U.S. Department of Commerce estimates a 6.6% increase in e-commerce sales as of the third quarter in 2021 when compared to third quarter of 2020, with an overall increase in total retail sales of 13.2%. So this chart here really sort of ties into the second handout that you received. This handout that has the general fund, fund balance projections in it. What's reflected there in the handout, like I said, it just shows the makeup of the fund balance for each particular category, ending with the number of days for the general fund, the OLOS public safety and the OLOS infrastructure. Keep in mind that the information that's listed on this particular chart does not impact that number. This information is after the calculation of the unassigned reserve days. So we're at 117 days in fund balance reserves. That is after these reserve items that are listed here on this slide. So currently, in the general fund reserves, we have about $10 million reserved for our citywide pay plan implementation. Currently, that, there's an RFP process in place to select a consultant that's gonna help us develop our, or redefine, fine-tune our compensation and classification plan. There's also $2.5 million reserved for general government capital equipment. $5.2 million remaining in reserves, was remaining in reserves, in CARES Act reserves. We did utilize about $1.4 million of that to pay out those pandemic pay bonuses to all essential workers. These were the bonuses for those employees who were not eligible for the premium pay under the ARP requirement, so we utilized this funding to pay out those bonuses. Of course, we have continuous COVID-related expenses. Year-to-date, that's about $338,000. And the OLOS, as far as the fund balance reserves, we set aside $3.5 million for public safety capital equipment. We have, you know, come back to council in the recent weeks, in recent weeks, utilizing some of these reserves to make some of those critical equipment purchases that departments have come before you advise that they were in desperate need of, particularly for the fire department. That was a really big ticket item, where we utilized reserve for three fire trucks here. $396,000 for 10 pursuit vehicles for the sheriff's office. And then there is $647,000 for the locks and security system at the jail. That is actually on the agenda today. There's $3 million in reserves for the jail design project so that there can be the development of a jail master site plan that really sort of coordinates with what we're gonna do with the government center and the Snovis building. And then $1.6 billion in remaining CARES Act reserves that was in the OLOS fund. And we utilized that, again, to purchase fire trucks and to make enhancements to the emergency operations center. So, again, we budgeted about 15 days, budgeted to use about 15 days in FY '22. However, that will likely change, you know, as our revenues and expenditures play out for the rest of the fiscal year. We will likely not utilize all of the fund balance reserves that we budgeted. So this just provides a snapshot as of today. This is near-final numbers for November. We are still in the process of closing out November. So I will likely have a finance report for next Tuesday. But right now, in terms of our operating revenue, we've recorded about $115 million and about $121 million in expenditures. Now, keep in mind, we did budget a lot of one-time capital expenditures and investments for FY '22, so that really makes up a large number of, that represents a large portion of this difference between FY '21 and FY '22. But I will say, if we were to exclude the one-time audit revenues from FY '21, our operating revenue would actually be up 2.2%. And that would amount to about $112 million in revenues, again, excluding the one-time audit monies that we received in FY '21. The other local option sales tax, to date, collections to date are about $14.4 million. That is for our public safety portion as well as the infrastructure. What's important to note about this chart here is that we've collected to date $14.47 million. And if we collect just the exact same amount, no more, no less than what we've collected last year, we will likely end up with about $43 million in sales tax collections in our other local option sales tax fund. And, again, excluding the one-time audit monies, our OLOS sales tax collections would be up as of October 10%. Even though it's showing a 12% decrease right now, it's, again, due to the one-time audit monies. And so this last slide just simply shows the adopted operating budget for the past few years, using a five-year blended average of revenues, while also incorporating some of the revenue trends, you know, that we've seen recently. This just shows a projection of the operating budget into FY '26. Again, it's just an estimate because it is all dependent on the continuation of our current revenue trends as well as strict adherence to our strategic spending plans. So departments have to stay within budget and we are, need to either collect or exceed our revenue projections. And that is the update. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Ms. City Attorney, did you have a comment?
Just one final comment. I know we had a long agenda, Mayor, but time permitting, we need an executive session on litigation, personnel, and security plans.
Gotcha, thank you. Counselor Davis?
Ms. City Manager, well, here's your moment. Well, I was gonna, you know, and I hate, you know, she just gave a report on the financial condition of our city. And she said a lot, but I really want to make sure that we heard what she said, not we around the table, but the community. You know, what, because the people around this table just don't get the credit for your leadership in a lot of cases. And, but I heard what she said and I know that you did, but, and I, you know, I really want to put it in my words, the financial condition of our city. So, you know, I did make some notes. Because our financial condition status is better today than I have seen it in my entire career. We've got challenges, true, but our financial condition, because of the leadership around this table, is better than I've ever seen it through all other mayors and councilors and in my entire career. And I've been with the city 37 years. So what she has just shared with you is that we, the CCG Columbus, has a strong, healthy financial profile. And I know that I'm taking time, but I think it's important that we hear this. One thing she didn't say is our bond rating, our credit rating, is AA2 with Moody and AA+ with Standard and Poor's. That's a strong, healthy financial profile and something we all, to all be proud of. And you heard her talk about our reserve fund. We have an administrative policy of 90 days. The Government Finance Officers Association recommend no less than 60 days. You just heard her say that we currently have 117.91 days in our fund balance, reserve fund. You say an administrative policy of 90. GFPA says 60. You heard her say 117.91 days is what we have. That, and it's on your documents. That, and it's on your documents, that is 61.3 million cash that we have in our reserve fund. That is phenomenal. She just told you that our sales cap, tax collection is up, up, sales tax collection, $7.1 million. And she told you that we collected 45.2 million in sales tax. I just want to recapture what you just heard. The title tag at Willorm Tax is up, $7.3 million, up, 7.3 million dollars. She told you occupational tax is up, 1.4 million. Property tax is up, up, 960,000. Insurance premiums up, 800,000. She told you recording intangibles up, 730,000. And, and Mayor, when I say that, because you said it many times before to remind citizens, we have not had a millage increase on citizens since 2008. No millage increase since 2008. In fact, we have decreased, we have decreased the millage rate for citizens over the last five years. That's what you've done over the last five years. And then she didn't mention our pension fund. Our pension fund, listen to this, our pension fund has increased, increased by approximately 162 million dollars in 18 months since April of 2020. It has gone from 466 million over that time period to 628 million as of October this year. The pension fund, 166 million dollars has increased. We have, uh, we are 94% funded in general fund, general government pension, and 88% funded in public safety pension. That's what you have done in your performance. And then I like to tell citizens, we have 10 active transportation projects citywide, citywide, at a value of approximately 300 million dollars. We received, as you know, 39, 39 million dollars of the 79 million American Rescue Recovery, uh, American Rescue Plan funds. And we are modernizing waste collection and we're, the citizens just approved a 400 million dollar sales tax. We've applied for the state ARP funds. We've submitted several applications. And we are going to receive federal infrastructure dollars, 20.7 million for transportation and I don't know how much else as of yet. But I see Chris Woodruff here. Hotels are being constructed, condos, apartments, roads are being resurfaced, uh, and we have new restaurants throughout Columbus, Georgia. More than 1.2 million people visited us last year and our convention business is strong. And so, you know, I'm gonna stop there, but I, you know, I could go on. And, uh, and now we're the second largest city. And according to Wallet Hub, Google Wallet Hub for the best-run cities in America, and you'll see that Columbus, Georgia is the 28th best-run city in America, in America. And then, when you pull up that list and see the 150 best-run cities in America, look for some other Georgia cities and see who's listed. So I just wanted to take this time to, you know, toot our own horn and make sure the citizens have captured what she just said. Because it's cred, the, the, the mayor and the members of council deserve a lot of credit for the good work that you've done in Columbus, Georgia. And I'm not afraid to say it. And so I say to you, thank you for your leadership. So that's the fin, I wanted you to really capture the financial condition of our city. And, and Mayor, if there are no questions, she's done and I've got a chance to say what I want to say.
All right, we've got Councilor Davis on the mic.
Ms. City Manager, I'm glad you really highlighted that. It's just tremendous, tremendous report, probably over the years since I've been here. Uh, if not the best, one of the best reports I've ever heard. Uh, the citizens can be proud, they can be proud of Columbus and how financially sound our cities ran, uh, and where we're at today. You know, all I can say is congratulations and thank you, thank the staff for a job well done, excellent. I'm gonna use first, I usually don't use first names, Angelica, Pam, Lisa, all the rest of you involved in this. I mean, that's just something that's, you just don't hear it today. And I remember, what I wanted to say about this is I remember since 2007, during the Great Recession, people don't realize how close this city was virtually going to go under financially and not really return if it wasn't for BRAC. If we didn't have BRAC and the billions of dollars coming into Fort Benning, we would have had nothing to support our economy. We would have probably been on the bottom of the list in the worst cities affected by the Great Recession. Ms. City Manager, how long here's, well, you note, how long it take us to even get close to coming back over the years? You know, you mentioned the retirement fund. The retirement fund was heading in a downward spiral to the point of probably the risk of no return. I mean, that wasn't being publicized, but the employees' retirement fund was about to go bankrupt.
We lost 150 million dollars, to be exact.
That never hit the papers.
No.
But it took us the challenges to get through. People don't realize the challenges that this city had during that period and we weren't drawing. We were on the bottom of the list of revenue. Everybody else was, you know, when the, the bull market started and economies start recovering, Columbus was doing this still. And we couldn't figure it out. But we kept addressing these challenges and doing the best we could with what we had. The healthcare plan, you remember how difficult that was in sustaining the retirement, uh, fund for the employees and going through the challenges. We were able just every year to give a little bit, a little bit and raising employee salaries because there wasn't really no money and still holding the reserves and still being able to run the city and do the things that we could do. Just today and where we're at, uh, I, I would say, you said, what did you say, 23, 28? Best operated city?
28th.
Now, I would say now with that report today, you're probably gonna be in the top 10, maybe the top 5. I mean, I'd put my money on the top 5 financially sound cities in the United States. I mean, it's gotta be. I don't know of anybody else that's where we're at today. I hope we continue to be able to do some things with the millage and for the citizens of Columbus, uh, because they, uh, they've invested in, in our community and, you know, it's time to, uh, to return, uh, some of the, uh, the, the, I guess, the, the success, if I may, of where we're at. There's a tremendous amount of success going on in our community and it's exciting and then, look, we've still got our challenges, but on the financial side, we've got a lot of challenges, but still on the financial side, um, our city's in good shape. I think the citizens can really, really be proud of that. And I'm looking forward to being able to do some of the things that we always said that we were trying to do, but we couldn't do. How many times I talk about the capital replacement, uh, you know, and that was the monster in the closet fixing to come out and hit us, and it was. I mean, not being able to replace vehicles, heavy equipment, equipment across the board. And, you know, fortunately with the Rescue Act money and now with where we're at, it doesn't mean that, that, you know, that money's gonna sit there because we still have those challenges to, to deal with, but it's gonna expedite what we couldn't do in all those years before, uh, that we just were hanging on and hanging on and hanging on. So I'm excited about that. I'm excited about now being able to do something for the employees. Uh, you know, we've talked about that for years, but now having the opportunity, I don't even know if anybody really realized what you said about the 10 million sitting. That's on top of everything is sitting over there in a fund waiting to be utilized to, to help in this situation, so.
That's correct. Yeah. And I didn't mention that. Uh, I told you about it, but that 117.91 days, that's 61.3 million cash that's there. That's after, after setting aside 10 million for pay plan implementation, um, 2.5 million for general government capital equipment, 3.5 million for public safety capital equipment, 5.2 million remaining CARES Act reserves in general fund, and 3 million for jail design, 1.6 million remaining CARES Act reserves. That's 25 million set aside and we still have 117.91 days after setting aside that money to take care of those critical needs.
Well, that's just good stuff. But a lot of those things we've been challenged with, uh, we knew it was a matter of time before we're gonna have to address them. Now we're getting to the point that we can take care of some of these things. So that's gonna be a good thing for the future of these, this city. And, uh, I think I probably said enough, so again, congratulations, uh, outstanding job, the staff, uh, tremendous efforts. It's not just, you know, you mentioned, you, you, you mentioned the leadership here. I'm, I'm pushing it back towards the people who help run this city every day and working together as a team. Mayor, thank you and, and, uh, again, that's just an outstanding report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Barnes?
I mean, Glenn just said pretty much everything, I mean, but I'm glad you went down that memory lane, um, Great Recession 2007, because things were scary then. But the, um, the advantage of, um, being able to look backwards and you see how forward you're going, you've come. And it's nice to, Mr. City Manager, that you give this counsel and these couns, this counselor, the mayor, and, and they do deserve the credit. But also, I think under your title, it says city manager means you manage what, means you manage the city. So a lot, uh, what Glenn said, send it right back to you and the staff, the great job that you have done. And thanks again, Glenn, for going down memory lane because it, it's, it was, it was, when you were speaking, I was thinking about how things were nip and tuck. And when things get to the point of nick and, nick and tuck, you don't have that much leeway. But it just goes, it's good to look back because then it lets you see how far you've come and how the good Lord has blessed this city. And so, Mr. City Manager, you've done an awesome job, you and staff, and every employee and employee here has done just a phenomenal job. It's so good to hear that good news. Thank you.
Well, we've, we've, um, celebrated a lot, but I, I also want to send my thanks and congratulations to the staff for what they've done. And, you know, I think it also shows, back during the recession, the necessity of having a robust fund bal, uh, fund reserve, general fund reserve balance, because that's what we've had to utilize very judiciously to be able to make it through the lowest points. And, uh, and that's why we work so hard to try to make sure we have a solid, very healthy, uh, fund balance, uh, going forward, because we know the storms are gonna come again and we gotta, we gotta be as prepared as possible. So congratulations to everybody who had a hand in that. It's outstanding. All right, um, will, anything else, ma'am? That's good enough. All right. First up is Mr. Marvin Broadwater, Senior.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, am I to understand that on this first reading, the public gets to speak? It's a part of it here?
Yes, ma'am. If you want to speak to the budget, you may.
Yes. Well, budgets, uh, I look at in terms of what it does for people. Wonderful management, uh, on the part of the city manager and his staff. Sales taxes are the most regressive taxes. Property taxes are important to budgets when you want to be fair to poor people in communities. And this budget does not speak to how you're gonna make it better for the quality of life of poor people. And that is what has to be put across clearly. How does it improve the quality of life of the least of these? Because the mayor previous has and have nots. That was her big thing. Has and have nots. Well, guess what? It's not better. So what does it do to have all of this good stuff going on when the poverty in this community for children and others continues to worsen, when the crime continues to worsen associated with the poverty? So you've got to have a budget that really reflects what you're doing for the peoples. That's why we elect folks who sit up there, because they should say how the money is being used to improve the quality of life of people. It's not in there. Great, great, lots of business, yeah, you do plenty of business. It's a real estate town. But the poor people are suffering more and more day by day. I see that. What are you gonna do for the people with all this good stuff that's going on? How do you improve the quality of life of people who are not doing well? Who's sales taxes, by the way, are helping because that hurts poor people, Ms. Tucker. The sales taxes really hurt poor people. And then you add another penny, you add another penny, and you add another penny. Property taxes is where most progressive communities get their money. I know this. I know how you run a good city. The people who can afford to pay, pay more, not the least of these. That's what the problem is about your report, Mr. City Manager. I hope you understand where I'm coming from. I hope you do.
All right, we'll move, I'm sorry, Ms. Liddeny.
It's fine. I'll make it quick so Marvin can go and get his done. Um, I remember what it was like during the recession. I worked the grunt level. I was a dispatcher. I remember what it was like to be denied bonuses. I know what it's like to have the premiums on your insurance raised and raised and raised. I know what it's like to be a corrections officer where you have no way, no way to move up and increase your pay and your insurance goes up. I have people that I know that work admin who have recently been denied raises when the fire chief has come here and requested raises for the administration. Where would y'all be at without your administrative staff? Where would y'all be at? Would you be able to get all those emails done? Would you be able to connect with the public? Are they going to benefit from this? That's my questions, because they're the ones who suffer the most every time something is raised and they get denied raises. So I want us to consider that. We need to take care of all levels of our government, especially those that support y'all. And I am speaking for them for that reason. But I personally know what it was like during that recession. We left because the insurance was so high and not worth it for our autistic child. My husband, now we're separated, was making more take-home pay at a lower income job because of the deductions. Think about that. This is part of why we are losing valuable employees. So please consider that. Make sure you take care of all your support staff too. Not the higher-ups, not the sergeants, lieutenants, majors. We need to make sure we take care of our clerks and our administrative staff as well, because they need comparable raises for what they do to take care of y'all so you can do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, you know, not to answer all the issues, but, but we actually, we, we gave raises every year for about the past four years and we have held the line on the health, health insurance too. It's been very important for us. But I do know that through the years, it's been tough. The other thing we're doing right now, because we believe some of the, uh, points you brought up are very valid, uh, we've got a, a pay study that is out there and, and we have set, that's what that 10 million is set aside for, so that when the pay study comes in, it's not something that gets put on a shelf, it's something that we can actually begin to address and try to make a difference and make sure that our, our, our employees are being paid, uh, just like anybody in, in any other government are paid.
No disrespect, but administrative staff who has worked here 15 years should not be one of the lowest paid in a tower.
And that's what we're hoping that, that pay plan will, will show us. So we'll see.
We did inform on that. She works two jobs now.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to speak to the? Anybody else want to speak to the item? All right, hearing nobody, we'll move on to the public agenda. Mr. Broadwater? Thank you for your patience, sir. Mr. Broadwater, I won't start the timer until after you have a chance to introduce yourself and you give your address.
You're fine. Mr. Mayor, good morning, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city manager, city attorney, administrative staff, and citizens of Columbus. My name is Marvin Broadwater, Senior. I reside at 3004 Slippery Rock Court, Columbus, Georgia, 31909. First, as always, I would like to thank you for your continued servant leadership in this, to this community. More often than not, citizens appear at this podium to only identify concerns, issues, or challenges that they observe in our fair city. To that end, I would first like to start with a colossal thank you on behalf of the disabled veterans, those that are bedridden, and those that are total and permanently disabled. Remember, all wounds are not visible. There are many that cannot make it here to voice a hearty thank you themselves. So, I make it on their behalf. We say thank you. We thank the city government for your willingness and commitment to ensure disabled veterans will have means of transportation to the new VA clinic on River Road via Metro. I want to personally thank the entire staff at Metro, as they were courteous and considerate when I called several times requesting information on endeavor to relay to our disabled community, especially Mr. Jenkins. I am also here to identify a flaw in our organizational structure of government, in my opinion. Maybe it's just me. Maybe I am the only one in this city that has had an issue with the tax assessor's office. But I refuse to let anyone be disrespected in my presence. And when that person being disrespected is me, then it becomes a colossal issue. I had a disagreement with one of the employees in the tax assessor's office. When I asked an employee of the office, "Who is that person's supervisor?", I was told, "You would have to talk to the tax commissioner." So, I ventured down to the office, I ventured downstairs to the tax commissioner's office, who was at that time in a meeting. The deputy tax commissioner spoke with me. He said, "No one in the city's organizational structure has authority over the tax assessor's office." To me, that was odd. He said, "You would have to talk to the tax assessor's board." So, I ventured back upstairs to the tax assessor's office to request an appearance with the tax assessor's board, knowing that they meet every Monday, as this was on a Thursday. I was informed, the lady that makes those appointments was out for the day. I did receive a call the next day, however, and she relayed that I could appear before the tax board on December 13th, three weeks away. This is a board, as I remind you, which you appoint. I don't know any part of our government, be it local, state, or national, where a citizen cannot make an in-person complaint about a governmental employee when it happens. As I sat at my desk after the call, I thought, "How could this whole thing have been avoided?" Again, it came to me. Approximately 14 years ago, I asked this body to consider employing a military liaison for the city. I was asked, "Why do we need a military liaison, Mr. Broadwater? We have an excellent relationship with Fort Benning." I am here to humbly and respectfully ask that you reconsider that request. I am here also to remind you, my fair leaders, there are thousands of veterans and disabled veterans that live in this community. Many of us do not work nor live on Fort Benning. We don't want special treatment. All we want is respect, like any other citizen, and live and a chance to live our productive life for our community, as we did in the military. I'm gonna read a quote from a, who now is one of my icons. One minute?
No, that's, that's your time.
That's fine. Okay. All right, thank you. I yield back, thank you for your time. I yield back my time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Broadwater. All right, next is Ms. Jennifer Ledeni regarding the action taken against three officers for assisting a parent. Does she step out? We'll, we'll move on and get her when she comes back in. So, we'll, we'll go to Mr. Ronzel Buckner, representing, here's, here comes, here she comes, Ms. Ledeni. Hang on. Ms. Ledeni, you'll have five minutes.
Jennifer Ledeni, my address is 2440 Diane Avenue. Stop. I apologize for my attitude. I have been up all night because we had shots fired right next door to my house at 2:30. But however, I want to thank the police department for their immediate response, because normally, we're not that lucky. And unfortunately, they did not catch the perpetrator. But I do thank them for their efforts, because it has not been a great place to stay right now. Anyways, I'm here to support the three officers that were suspended in reference to the incident that happened a couple of weeks ago, where a mother had requested for them to assist her in the disciplining of her child. We know that Georgia is a corporal punishment state. I understand there are questions about it, about them holding her down. But I want you all to ask yourselves these questions. Was that child, a child with combative behavior in the past? Because I know what that's like. That mother was not, was not sounding authoritative, like an abusive parent would. I should know, I am a child of abuse. That mother was a mother in distress, trying to gain control of her child before she became another statistic. And all she did was ask the police officers for their help. What would have happened if they weren't there? Would she have finally snapped and then injured the child further? And that's the purpose of the investigations, and I can appreciate that. When you're an officer, whether corrections or law enforcement, that's just part of your career. Whether you do the right thing or not, you're gonna face an investigation some point in time. That's just how it is. And it's to air out these questions. What's appropriate, what's not? I also want to reflect on an incident that happened in May of 2015, where Columbus Police had responded to a 10-year-old who was unruly and had to be sent home from school. That mother called for assistance. They did a mock arrest, put him in the back of the patrol car, and rode him around the block, and then had a talk with him. If I'm not mistaken, that child's behavior was a, it just spun around. He was respectful. He no longer talked back to his mother. There were no further problems. And that is the impact the police department can have on our children. The outrage is coming from how the memo was articulated. The outrage is coming from GBI being involved. Why could this not be handled within the department internally? I'm only expressing views that were expressed to me, as well as how I feel. I want to give you a different version of articulation and the power of articulation. One of the most difficult parts that I faced as a corrections officer was when they brought the murderer of our brother, Meredith Rhodes, back to our facility, and we had to take care of him until trial. Instead of Lieutenant John Fitzpatrick, now retired Chief Fitzpatrick, telling us, "We better not", he told us he knew he had the caliber of officers that would do the right things. He didn't tell us we were under watch. He just told us, "We're gonna be monitored closely because of our relationship with Meredith Rhodes." The difference in this articulation is instead of varying on the cost of professionalism, objectivity, he empathized us with this loss, he built his staff up. We have got to build our officers up. They are out there facing the worst of humanity. They're out there understaffed, and they're out there putting many hours all times of night. They go from call to call to call to call. We need to be there to support our good officers. And that's what I'm here to do today, to let them know the public does care, and we do support them. And I hope you understand. It's not any disrespect to anybody, but these officers need to know they have public support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I agree with you. They do need to know they have all of our support from the neighborhoods as well. And I know Chief Blackman is here. I don't know if he wants to say anything. I think in, in early discussions, it was mentioned that that's to protect the officers as much as anything, and to have that internal investigation, as well as GBI just follows the procedure. I'm sure you may want to make a comment.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, council members. To Ms. Delaney. In just a very brief response, I listened to what was being communicated. But, and I want to start off by first saying that I appreciate the support that Ms. Delaney has for our police officers, as well as our citizens, and definitely the leadership of our city. I always appreciate that support. But at the same time, I want everyone to understand that our officers are top-notch, professional men and women who go to work every day to do a very good job to keep this city safe. And they do that when they run into dangerous situation, situations, and not away from dangerous situations. We're responsible for the livelihood, the lives of those we interact with. And so, anytime we're met with situations, we're going to ensure that we are transparent and ensure that the right thing is done without question. And so, no officer has been accused of committing any crime. The investigations that are currently underway are a stand, part of our standard protocol. It's a two-part investigation that involves GBI, as well as our officer professional standards, who will conduct, who are conducting the internal investigation. And so, at the end of these investigations, we will be able to assess exactly what occurred. And then that won't, that will not be in a situation for any speculative comments. We know exactly what occurred, and we'll be able to make the best decision based on the factual information. So...
Thank you.
But we do appreciate the support, and we look forward to continue to operate in a top-notch, professional manner.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Buckner? Thank you again for your patience, sir.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
The first thing I'd like to say, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming out to the farm, working with me on Chevrolet. And I'd like to invite the rest of the council people to come out and visit the George Washington Carver Outdoor Learning, the Martin Luther King Outdoor Learning Trail, and also the George Washington Carver Victory Guard, which is housed at Marshall Success Center and also J.D. Davis Elementary School. But I'm here this morning to talk about a problem that my community is having that came to me and asked me to address it for them. We are having a, a problem with litter, and it is excessively bad. If you look at the screen up top, we didn't have this type of problem until individuals, younger individuals, started moving into our community. I've lived in that community since I was six years old, and we never had anything like this. This problem here is where a naval put their trash out on the side of the highway on Sundays, and they do not put a lid on the top of the trash can. And when the can get full, they just throw the trash on the side of the cans with bags of trash. We have seniors in our community that go out in the community in the morning time and pick up litter along our streets, because we believe in keeping our community clean. I have called Code and Enforcement about this problem. And Code Enforcement has been out approximately nine times to talk to this person that live at this house about this problem. So, I asked Code and Enforcement why we can't get this cleared up. Because what is happening is that this is at the end of Steam Mill Road, where it intersects with Pine Crest Drive. Traffic now, because of the industries and the industrial parks out on Chicago Road, people are using the street of Steam Mill, coming through there, and they're calling it a shortcut. And we see people ride through our community with trash bags hanging on the mirrors of the cars. And when they go around through the community, they see a place that's open, and no one is there in that area. They take the trash and just let it fall off of the car right into the street, or throw it out in, on the side of the road. I talked to Code and Enforcement about this, and they told me, "Say, Mr. Buckner, we come out", and I know they do. "We come out, and we knock on the door and try to give them a citation about this, because we've been here nine times already. But we cannot leave a citation in the door. We have to put it in their hands." Now, we need to, and I've asked the city to address this problem before. We need to change our codes and upgrade the enforcement of it. Because we got people moving into our city from all over, different areas. And we got to bring our code and enforcements up so that we can service not only the community that we live in, but also service people that are moving into our community and get them to understand that we do not litter our community. One of the things I want to make a comment about was the convenience stores. The Lotto, yes, it bothers me. But what bothers me the worst is that these Lotto stores, they get a garbage dumpster that's too small for the trash that they generate. And once the trash dumpster is full, they drop the other trash down on the ground on the side of the dumpster. Now, I own a business in this city myself. I've been in business since I was 17 years old. I purchase my service from a dumpster company also. And dumpsters that you see on the outside of these businesses are the smallest dumpsters that most of the dumpster container distributors have. We need to take a look at what is happening to our community and how it's changing from being one of the cleanest communities in Georgia to one of the worst-littered communities in Georgia.
Mr. Buckner, I appreciate your comments. We've got a couple of councillors that have some questions or comments. Councilor Barnes?
Mr. Buckner, I want to thank you for coming. Now, I know you and I have had, first of all, let me preface what I'm saying. I do not envy the city manager's job. My years in the military, both I, and I know councillor House as well, has been in a situation where the buck stops with you. Whenever I've had a problem, and I know I'm not the only one with special enforcement issues, I'm talking about issues. I'm talking about issues. Whenever I call the city manager, even in the evening, early in the morning, when he's out walking or whatever, he's always responsive and he gets. The problem is, is that we as council, we need to do a relook at the policy and procedures of special enforcement. And I'm not going to go into a couple of cases that are current now that I have about four of my citizens beat me over the head with, many in terminal court. Now, the city manager drove, I asked him one evening, he got into his vehicle, correct their parole, and drove through terminal court because Candace, your granddaughter, is the one who called me and said, could you do that? And the city manager did. He says, you need work. The things that, the things that were supposed to be complied with, as you very well know, because you've been there, have not been. And a lot of it means that we need to look at the policy and procedures because there are definite gaps. And the big problem is that we need to close the gaps so that the individual officers don't particularly have the wiggle room and they have to go by. Because one of the things that you just mentioned, turning in a letter. Now, I was told that they mailed it in to the owner of the place. And if it came back within 10 days, that the people had to correct it or be cited, or if the letter came back, I have it right here, if the letter came back, then we will contract and have it done. That is, that is not being, the letter of the policy is not being strictly adhered to as it should be. And the case in court is terminal court. Another case in court is Welborn Drive. Welborn Drive sometimes looks just like a third world country, the way things are done. And so I am in conversations with the city manager. We are discussing, I saw you come on the agenda, because of Candace. She said, could you ask the city manager, can we, as some of the citizens, and have council members, who I know that there are other complaints in other districts, sit down and do a relook at the policies and procedures of special enforcement? Because you, you see, there's different types of interpretation. I've had officers tell me the same type of a situation, but say the different remedy. And I have it in my phone, but I don't want to do that. I would like for us, because Mr. Buckner, his granddaughter, Mr. Eves, and gentleman, a gentleman that came down that time when we gave him, the citizens are on board with what, to help us. So I would like to do that. We do need to do a serious relook at special enforcement and code enforcement. And I spoke to Ryan Pruitt as I came in. And I'm going to show him two instances. I'm going to email it to you, but you're going to, I know you, it's, but it's communication. And it's not, it's not anything bad to do a relook. It's actually a good thing because things change, situations change and whatever. And so, Ronza, I appreciate you coming down there. I will come out there and look at the farm. First, some people have been out there. But I wanted to clear the air to let you, to let the citizens know. Whenever I've had a problem, I've called the city manager and it's taken care of. And so he's in the loop. He's on board and things will get better. And I appreciate, we always appreciate citizens like you who take, who love the city enough to take their time to come down and to verbalize any concerns that they have. So really appreciate you.
Good morning, Weppe. Thanks, sir. Councillor Tucker?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Buckner, for bringing this to our attention. I'm trying to see, a couple of meetings ago, I asked the city attorney and actually Lucy Sheffield had provided some information in reference to the trash receptacles being left out, you know, for days and that that's against our ordinance. And I think it was at the last council meeting that we learned, you know, that you can only put your trash receptacle out at 5:30 or after. And then once the trash is picked up, you bring it back in. You know, I'm just up the street from you and I passed by the area and it is a nuisance. And I do thank you and Ms. Kitty for going out there and all the other individuals because they clean this area. I know you do too, city manager. But they clean this area so frequently because that trash can stays out there for, and I'm not saying days, it's just out there. They don't even pull it, they don't even pull it back in, ever, ever. So yesterday, and I'm bringing this up to just the attention of council. Yesterday, and I actually called Pop Barnes, councillor Barnes, and I told him what I saw. I saw somebody actually going through and dumping some trash. And I took a photo and I said, and I stopped him. I said, you know, it's illegal to dump that trash out here like that. And I said, do you understand that that's a thousand dollar fine? He said, ma'am, I wasn't dumping trash. I said, you know something, you were and it's going to stop. It's going to stop because we're going to start, and exactly what councillor Barnes is mentioning about enforcement, we need that enforcement. We need it to be enforced because that's a problem. That area has become a high dumping site. It has become a high dumping site. And he, Mr. Buckner is exactly correct. The guy had the trash on his truck outside his window. And as he was turning, he slowed down and just threw the trash. And if, and I told councillor Barnes, if I would have came around that corner just 30 seconds before, I would have put it on video. But I did, I wasn't, but I did take a photo of his, of his vehicle and his tag. And councillor Barnes told me to stop doing it before somebody shot me. But I did pull up to him and I told him, I said, if I would have caught you on video, you would have been paying that fine. You would have been paying that fine. But we have to do something about it, you know, if we need to come together. And how can we enforce this? Is it a letter that goes out for that homeowner, Mr. Buckner has, you know, called in time after time, he said nine times he has called? Is there a process that we can revise to bring this to the attention? And this, and I appreciate, Mr. Buckner, but as I told you, I met with veterans from, you know, mostly District Four, but also District One and District Three. And it was about 20-some veterans. And that was the main concern, that was one of the main concerns of all of them, is we retired from Fort Benning. We came here because we love Columbus and we want our neighborhoods to be nice and clean and vibrant. And, you know, we just have to revisit how we enforce these issues. So thank you, Mr. Buckner. I appreciate you.
You're quite welcome. I think enforcing these issues will address the problem that I'm trying to address as far as teaching kids how to love their city. If we get the parents to do what they supposed to do, then the parent is going to set the example for the child. So sometime enforcing the law is very important.
Mr. Buckner, we thank you for your appearance and thank you for sparking this conversation. I know there are people all over Columbus who are so frustrated with the few that are continuing to try to mess up the neighborhoods and the roads and everything else. So thank you. We'll get it to codes and inspection. We'll try to have a discussion about how best to be able to enforce some of these.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
Y'all have a great day.
You too. All right, next is Ms. Teresa Elamine, discussing Women's International League for Peace.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Teresa Elamine, 3911, Steam Mill Road. You may recall that I came before you in March to let you know that for the first time here in Columbus, the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom established a branch in March with the support of the Southern Anti-Racism Network. WILF, the U.S. section, was founded in 1915. Women from the U.S. got on a boat and went to The Hague to try to stop the First World War. So it's one of those few 100-year-old organizations in this country. Over the years, many women of African descent have been members. Coretta Scott King was a member during the Vietnam era. Fannie Lou Hamer, Angela Davis, Shirley Chisholm, Eartha Kitt, and the list goes on and on. But over the years, as organizations do sometime, have this problem of what I call white supremacy in the organizations. Well, WILF is going through a period where it's trying to transform itself. So Friday is International Human Rights Day, December 10th. On December 10th in 1948, the United Nations adopted 30 articles on the rights of humans in the world. And when I come next time, maybe next week, I'll try to bring you one of those little Universal Declaration of Human Rights booklets. But I do want you to know that the conference on Saturday is virtual. It's the first annual. The National WILF gave us a $1,500 mini grant. And we are using it to pay speakers who will be speaking on the four different topics. Pastor John Vaughn, the executive pastor of Ebenezer Baptist Church in Atlanta, will be speaking on ending mass incarceration and the death penalty. Dr. Akinyele Umoshe will be speaking on the UN Decade for People of African Descent and Our Fight for Reparations Worldwide. So I invite you to attend the conference via Zoom on Saturday. But more importantly, I want you to understand that the second annual Fannie Lou Hamer Branch Human Rights Conference is proposed for the Trade Center here in Columbus on December 10th, 2022. You'll still be the mayor. And I want you to come and give us a proclamation on that day. So put it on your calendar, December 10th, 2022. If I understand the voting thing, even if you lose in May, you'll still be the mayor in December.
I'll still be around.
Okay, well, that's great because that's going to bring a bit of money to the community because we've been establishing branches led by women of color across the South. So the Triad Branch will come down from the Charlotte Piedmont area. The Metro Atlanta Branch will come down. They'll take the hotel rooms. I'll even take a hotel room for the weekend. And so we want to continue increasing the popularity of this great city because it's an international city and I support it. But I know there are certain things that are violating human rights, like that prison labor thing. We got to get rid of it. It's not working anymore. You can't pick up the trash. So prison labor should be over and finding a strategic way to wipe it out would be key, would be key at this point. Well, I thank you very much and I'd love to come with the material. So I have some extras left over, Lindsay. Oh, wonderful.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so I will see you next Tuesday. I guess you're having a council meeting, so I'll sign up. You know how I'd love to come talk to you.
Yes, ma'am.
See you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
All right, Ms. City Manager? I think we are on your agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few things. We've already handled number one, so let me go to number two. And it's a 2022 Legislative Agenda Item, Georgia.
Motion approved from councillor Huff, second from councillor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, we can queue it. Councillors, you can register your votes. Mr. City Manager, you can explain the grant.
Yeah, well, it's not a grant, but it's a Georgia Music Investment Act. And it's something, there's some people here, I know Zee is here and some others, supporting the music industry. And I just wanted to recognize them. I see Norm coming this way and a few others. But Mayor and council, Governor Nathan Deal signed House Bill 155 that created the Georgia Music Investment Act. Citizens and counties in Georgia have tried to bring jobs and economic growth to their communities, but have been unsuccessful due to the fact that the music tax credits are not workable. And they simply want to see those tax credits more workable. And because you've spent so much time here, if there's one of you who would like to say hello and speak to this, welcome you to the mic to do so.
Sure, and thank you very much. I can't let the moment pass though without thanking Gary Allen for cutting the ribbon to the Gingerbread Village at River Center. So thank you very much. Y'all need to come and visit the Gingerbread Village, I think. I'm Norm Easterbrook, Director of River Center. This legislation has been on your agenda before. It's something that River Center has requested. It affects theatrical production as well. And what it involves is a tax credit for production companies that wish to produce and initiate live tours in the state of Georgia. We've done this project, these projects a few times at River Center. We have two this year. Aquila Theater will be here together with the National Tour of the British Invasion. And this is where a production company comes into the community. They put everything together to start their tour and they initiate it from here. They stay in residence for as long as two weeks, purchasing all the material supplies, employing all the people that they need to employ to get their tour ready to go on the road. We have measured the economic impact can be anywhere from a million dollars per project like this upwards to about $2 or $3 million of economic activity that's left in the community after they leave. It's an extraordinary way to utilize existing infrastructure without negative impact on public services, healthcare, education, or anything along those lines. So we strongly urge you to support that. Our hope is that this would be successful without impact to other tax incentives that are in place for similar types of activities because there are tax incentives in place for the film industry about this. And what we are asking is that the legislation that's currently in place now be adjusted to allow production companies, the parameters, to fit within the parameters to take advantage of the tax incentive. For example, a project is eligible for the tax incentive if it tours for 12 months. Broadway shows tour for 13 weeks. That eliminates the producer from taking advantage of the tax incentive. And there are other parameters that we'd like to see adjusted that would accommodate both music and theater and make it a reliable and viable economic development tool. In a nutshell, that's it. And I thank you very much for the time to speak to you. I'm happy to take any questions you like.
Any questions, Ms. Easterbrook?
Norm, and I'd ask that each of you introduce yourselves just to say hello.
Hi, I'm Zee Lawrence, Music and Entertainment Council. So glad to see you all again. We'll perform a concert next time, but please support this resolution and we want to bring larger productions here. We're excited for these type of things to come to this city. We are a music city. So thank you.
Mr. Becker?
Anyone else?
The shy one.
Well, thank you for coming and sitting through the earlier part of the meeting.
And it was approved.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you all very much for what you do.
And so the next item, Mayor, is a renewal of Main Street Streets designation.
Motion approved from councillor Tucker, second from councillor House. Any discussion on the Main Street Memorandum of Understanding? Hearing none, all in favor, you can register your votes. Hearing none, all in favor, you can register your votes. Green for yes, red for no. All right.
Mayor, the next item is acquisition of 463 Brennan Road. You know that.
Second.
Motion to, I'm sorry?
I did not record my vote. We got it.
We got it. Clerk has it. Thank you. Motion to approve from Counselor Huff, and I think I heard a second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it. Register your vote.
Mayor, I've got a $6,000 Columbus Police Department donation.
Second.
Motion to approve, Counselor House, second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? Queue it up, and Counselors, you may enter your votes.
Mayor and Council, I've got a bright from the start, SNAP grant, $67,989.
Okay, motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Barnes. Any further discussion? All right, you can register your votes and continue with the description, Mr. Hughley.
Well, it's a SNAP grant, and we get these on a regular basis, $67,989. It's bright from the start, and it's a child and adult care food program. Then I've got number seven, Georgia Statewide After School Network.
Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem to approve items seven and eight, second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion on either one of those? All right, I think we need a voice vote on that, don't we, Bruce? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. City Manager, if you would highlight what those are.
And seven was a no-match, $238,000 Georgia Statewide After School Network Building Opportunities for Out-of-School Time Boost Grant. And number eight is a 2021 Homeland Security Grant in the amount of $21,030. It's no-match. The state is providing the funds for new equipment and the maintenance of equipment already received from the state in support of fire EMS. Number nine.
Second.
We have a motion for approval on item nine from Counselor Tucker, second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion? All right, please queue it. You can enter your votes. You may want to walk through this and maybe even ask Mr. Woodruff.
And Chris Woodruff is here, Mayor, and Chris, I want you to know that it has been approved, and you're welcome to come to the mic and share, but back June of 2021, Council approved a resolution authorizing City Managers to enter into agreement in the amount of $1.9 million for TAD allocation. And since that time, Chris Woodruff has expanded what he is doing and has modified the request in asking for an addition of $472,000 from the TAD for a total of $2.4 million. And I believe he's got some things that he wants to say or share with us.
Yes, and I'll be very brief. Thank you, everyone, Mayor, City Manager, Mayor Pro Tem, Deputy City Managers, Counselors, So wanted to just address real quick, there has been substantial material changes going on in the construction industry, and what you're seeing above on the screen, and happy to pass these out as well, so you can have them in front of you. But these are, just a quick notation of what's gone on since, over the past year since I actually applied for the TAD. So there has been substantial material increases, and I think that's, as you'll note on this graph, which is put together by Brasso and Bori on a quarterly basis, you'll see that there's a 55% increase in reinforcing bar and structural steel, as well as a 3% increase in ready-mixed concrete. These are all materials that go specifically towards the infrastructure and the items that go directly to what this TAD is about. So the changes that have been made are as much modifications as they are responses to value engineering opportunities and also to the material increases. It's one of those unfortunate things that we in the construction and development industry are having to fight on a regular basis. I know that you all are sensitive to this because you're seeing it in everything that's occurring with your pricing. The pricing that we all did a year ago is not the pricing that happened six months ago, three months ago, or even five days ago. So the great news about what's occurred is that I've at least stopped it, in the sense that we have a locked contract. And so that's going to prevent the question which has risen before, which is, would you come back to council again? The answer's no. Our contract for site and infrastructure right of way has been locked in place by Brasso and Bori, and we are, and we have been proceeding forward with that. So while we were originally approved for 1.98, I proceeded forward because I have a commitment to this council and to the city for that TAD, and am going forward today to ask for this increase to adjust for the material increases that we've seen. So what you'll see is about a 23% increase in materials, which equates to what we see in the marketplace.
Okay, well, it's all, it has been approved, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much, guys.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
And thanks for what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, on purchases, I've got A through F. You'll see an A1 and a A2. The alphabet that reflects the two has to do with GMA supplemental lease under GMA Direct Lease Program, because we're going through them for the lease of this equipment, but it has to do with landfill. We've got to service and stay in compliance at our landfills.
Second.
All right, there is a motion to approve the purchases A through H. Would anyone like one pulled or looked at for further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, would you walk through those, please?
I will, Mayor, and but we do have some in addition to A through H. But the landfill equipment is a tractor for Pangrove, A, 330 hydraulic excavator Pangrove, that's B. C is a loader, 950M for Pangrove. D, Aljon Series 525. This is all landfill equipment for Pangrove. And E is, we've got Ford Z920M Z-Track mowers for Pangrove. And then F, a John Deere Gator for Pangrove. And G is a Ford Expedition for IT. And H is a Ford Expedition for the Sheriff's Office. You've already approved those, and then.
Second.
All right, motion to approve purchasing items I through M, and by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Counselor House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, they're approved as well. If you list those, Mr. Hughley.
Okay, so I would be Roofing Services at Boxwood. And J, Roofing Services at Carver Park Gym. Got K, Property Damage Recovery Service. L, Provision and Installation. And I know that the sheriff representatives are here, but they've got some issues with locks and at the jail and the control, security control system at the jail, and this will take care of that. So installation of wedge locks and then replacement of the south tower and central control, security control system at the jail. And I do want to just acknowledge the representatives from the Sheriff's Office here. We've got Mr. Dar and Mr. Mitchell. Just thank you for being here, and but it has been approved. And so with that, Mayor, I've got just a couple of updates left. One is very brief, it's JR Allen's Safety Improvement Update, and then we'll hear from the Liberty Theater asked us to allow them to come and provide an update on their strategic plan. So we'll hear from our engineer first, Donna Newman, on JR Allen's Safety Improvement Update, and then we will hear from the Liberty and then the camera.
While she's coming, Counselor Davis has a question.
Sure.
Just a comment, observation, Ms. City Manager. I know some of these purchases say 2022 on them, but I'm not sure that those vehicles are even out on the lots yet, but, you know, we always talk about, and the city's been good about that, is going back to see what's in surplus in the inventory, whether it's 2021 or whatever's available. I don't know at this point. It's probably a lot of stuff is just off the lots. Not sure, not sure if the new ones are out, but, I mean, if they're out there, you most likely get a better deal and a new vehicle for a prior year.
Sure, and we'll check on that to see if they're out. I'm not sure, but certainly we'll check it and see.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Director Nevin?
Come on here. JR Allen.
Just want to give you a brief update. I've already talked to some of you. I know you've received some calls, and you've seen some work going on on JR Allen. A few weeks ago, I got a call from the district area engineer in concerns to a project that they had recently released and is now under construction. They are placing cabling guardrail along JR Allen, and the use of the cabling is to prevent cars, cars that lose control either through an accident or distracted driving or for whatever reason, could be weather conditions or whatever, is to keep a car from going across the median into the oncoming traffic, thus preventing accidents. And generally, those are very serious accidents. But the major concern is that will impact some of the existing pompous grass that has been placed out there, primarily between Moon Road and Schaumburg Road, and generally in the westbound direction. Most of it on the eastbound direction is not going to be impacted as much. So we talked to them about those impacts and our concerns of what it would do to the aesthetics, because we know there's been a lot of investment to landscape the median areas, and they look really nice and look really well. And they also provide some safety benefits. But what we're going to do is wait till the project is completed, reevaluated, and then if we think we need to replace or add some additional vegetation, then we'll make application to the DOT to do that.
And so this was just brief. I wanted you to hear that and the people watching via television to hear it, because they'll see someone out working and wonder what's going on, Mayor and Council.
Can I just make one other note? You'll see approximately five-foot strip of concrete that they're placing, and I know I'm getting a lot of questions about that, people thinking it's sidewalk. But what that is, is a beauty strip, and that's to keep vegetation from growing up through the cabling. A beauty strip, just to keep it clean and keep the vines and weeds from growing up through the cable. Make it easier to maintain.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go out of order. I believe we've got Kasim Latipo, KL Firm, if that person is here. We can, we can just. Kasim Latipo with KL Firm, they made a request through the mayor's office to do an update or presentation on the 2022-2024 Strategic Plan for the Liberty Theater. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and thank you to the Mayor and Council for this opportunity to present on, obviously, a very vital asset to the community. Again, my name is Kasim Latipo. I'm the founder of the KL Firm. We're a strategy and operations consulting firm, primarily working with nonprofits. I like to tell people I'm a recovering executive director, so I actually like the fact that I can provide clarity and capacity for executive directors and other, and board members. I have to admit, I mean, I have some slides, but to be honest with you, I first and foremost am just excited to see so many people collectively as a community excited about the rebirth of Liberty Theater. And when I use rebirth, I'm very intentional about that, because when you think of rebirth, you think about a revitalization and the ability to renew how you view an organization and the people that are connected to it. And so the theme of our work has always been, how do we create a rebirth for Liberty Theater? You can see the slides there. Just to give you a quick background, I'm not, for those of you, Mayor Henderson, Councilman Huff, Councilman Tucker, and Councilperson Woodson who were there. It was a longer presentation than what I'm going to present today, because I want to be sensitive to time, but I'll give you kind of a crash course in the strategic plan that we developed. Really quickly, you can see our team that participated. I'm not going to go through all of this, but as you know, there's a rich, deep history for Liberty Theater, and so we want to make sure that we're continuing to embrace that history. But obviously, the history is not what's the only thing that makes Liberty Theater a viable, a vital asset. There are things that are even happening, even up till the center was in disrepair, where they were still providing present-day value add to the community. Many of you have seen these types of plans before, so you know that you do SWOT analysis. Just wanted to show you here exactly what we kind of found. Obviously, it's a great asset, and the brand awareness, even as we're trying to make some tweaks, is still there. The opportunity to be at the center of the revitalization of the Liberty District was another key strength. And, you know, and there's obviously a track record of success, but obviously, there are some challenges that have, that have been presented to the theater, and so we want to make sure that we're addressing those things, infrastructure being one of the biggest things that we're wanting to address. But there's such incredible opportunity. I love the report from the city manager and the finance folks about all these wonderful things that are happening in Liberty, happening in Columbus, and obviously, there's an opportunity to take advantage of some of those things as it relates to improving the Liberty District and the theater. But there are just a lot of options that come from being a part of a vital city, a vibrant city, I'm sorry. But then, obviously, we've got to get things moving quickly because the way the philanthropic and the public funds begin to shift, like when the wind shift, we want to make sure that Liberty Theater is taking advantage of kind of presenting themselves as a value add to the community so that they're always top of mind when we're thinking about where funding needs to be distributed. So this is just really the key findings. For us, it all starts with the brand. I know many people say, we want to make sure that we get the building out of disrepair, but everyone's going to say, well, if we do that, what's the end goal? To what end? And so we want to make sure that the brand of Liberty Theater, reanchoring on the old, on the story of why it's so vital, but also the brand in terms of what differentiates Liberty Theater from the other theater, the other vibrant theater entities that are in the community. The big thing we also want to do is make sure we differentiate Liberty Theater, because the African-American history, the art and culture that's been tied to the Liberty Theater has a very distinct brand that we want to make sure that we're elevating and then providing programming that supports that. You know, for us, it all comes back to what are the foundational structures that we want to maintain? And obviously, for me, and being in the nonprofit world for a while, mission, vision, and values are critical to that. And we'll talk about some of the other things later in the presentation. So here's a recommendation, brand clarity, targeted marketing. We want to make sure that everyone, whether you're a resident, a business owner, or someone who's actually here for the first time, a tourist, you know the Liberty brand, there's clarity on who they are and what they try to do. How do we get very focused on our target profile customer? Liberty Theater is not just an entity for the black community. I want to make sure that is clear. The asset that Liberty Theater provides is just an asset for the entire community. They just may have a distinct focus on what they actually provide in terms of programming. Obviously, once we add the, tell the story, and people are excited about it, the biggest asset is the building, so at some point, we do have to address the building renovations. But then after the building is renovated, we still need the capacity, whether it's technology and people to actually run the program. And then as the organization begins to thrive, eventually, you're now needing to grow the organization such that they can service the increased demand that'll come once they've demonstrated their value and sustainability as an organization. One of the things that we really loved is that the mission was already strong, so we wanted to keep it. But the key here is the vision. To what end? 20 years from now, where do you want to be? And so we want to make sure that the vision really. And so, we want to make sure that the vision really speaks to Liberty Theater not only being a great asset in Columbus, but in the entire state of Georgia. Foundational values. What are the things that the organization will embody? Not just the staff, but the board, but also the key stakeholders. Inclusion, collaboration, excellence, honor, and fellowship. These are all important values that also ensures that the organization is always a place that where people are welcome to come to, a place where you're going to get high-quality programming, but also a place where it's not just about Liberty Theater, right? I've talked to Norman as well through this process at the River Center. I've talked to the folks at the Springer. People want to be a part of this and Liberty Theater is now going to present themselves as an organization that wants to collectively work with the community. And so, fellowship as well. How do we bring people together and actually offer these great opportunities to connect on many levels? One of the best things I've enjoyed was going on a tour hosted by the Visitors Bureau where it was two people coming from different walks of life, but they were both sharing Liberty stories. They both lived at, let's just assume, different sides of the track, right? But when they had conversations about Liberty Theater, you could see this warmness that came from that. And these are longtime residents. So, just imagine, as you continue to kind of build up Liberty Theater, the many stories that you can continue to have that are shared amongst different stakeholder groups. So, I'm not going to go through all the details here, but these are the phases that kind of I referenced earlier. You know, we want to re-anchor the community on the Liberty story. We also want to make sure, as we're talking about the story, that it also associates with a brand that differentiates itself and demonstrates value to the community. We want to make sure that the programming actually ties to the mission, the vision, and the values, right? That's just very simple. Make sure it's cohesive. Make sure the facility is supportive of that. And one of the things that you note up here, I'll just note at the bottom, is that there are just some really creative ways that the Liberty Theater can differentiate itself from other theaters in the community. And it's just specifically focused on, it's specifically directed towards the Liberty Theater because they're uniquely positioned to do this. But you think about an history of African-American dance video series or Spike Lee series. These are things that are unique to the culture that Liberty Theater wants to embrace and elevate. And so, why don't we take the unique differentiated approach as opposed to maybe trying to do things that are a bit more mainstream? Because that's how you differentiate your value in the community. This is not just a staff thing. It's not just a community thing, right? We got to make sure that the board is really more like a rebirth board. We want to make sure that the board really understands the role that they need to play to strategically push the organization forward. And as they are pushing the organization forward through the bringing in of resources, this also lends itself to being able to expand the capacity of the staff in order for the staff to actually be able to maintain the sustainable operations of the organization. And then, as I mentioned before about the building renovations, you know, I've been in the fundraising world for a while. At some point, you have to get down to looking at the key funders, benefactors out in the community that are actually going to be targeting, wanting to keep the organization open, but also move it forward. This is more of, after you build the infrastructure, this is what, you know, in the first 12 to 18 months, this is what the focus would be to expand on that infrastructure. Here's just an org chart that actually aligns with where we're trying to go. One of the things that you'll notice here is having an artistic director is vital to the continued valuable programming of the organization. And then, obviously, you know, here are some of the aspects of Phase Two as it relates to revenue generated. The first revenue push is to basically build the proper infrastructure. This revenue model is more about sustainability. And then, let's leverage capacity that's not always financially focused. How can we leverage Columbus State University, some of the local high schools, to add capacity, technical or just time and hands, that can actually move the organization forward? And then, obviously, these are kind of in the desired state. Here's what's exciting about the organization, right? You have a credible brand. You have an engaging, committed board. Repaired facility that's actually functioning in a way that's modern, but also preserves some of the history of the organization. And adequate staffing to sustain it over time. And then, if you look at Phase Two, again, these are the levers that you have in place to sustain it. A revenue model that drives sustainability, increased staffing as the organization expands. And now, we're talking about strategic partnerships, not just partnerships that you can advertise in a magazine, but partnerships that are budget-relieving or funder or revenue generating. And so, here are some of the next steps. I'm not going to go through all of them because I know I'm probably limited on time and I want to make sure I'm available for questions. But, you know, obviously, getting to some of the blocking and tackling of the work. We've got to have a budget, not just for the renovation, but for the sustained budget to sustain the organization, getting the board in place that really speaks to where we're trying to go. Make sure the story's developed. Solidify the value proposition. Make sure that the appropriate assets are available from a digital basis to make sure we can distribute content in a polished and effective way. And then, let's start talking to the people that we really need to start cultivating now, hopefully for strategic support in the future. And then, we've kind of looked at the January, February is the period where we do more of an official launch, where we actually have a campaign around it to build brand awareness and to raise dollars. So, I'll stop there. Sorry if I went over time. Oh, there you are. And then, Ms. Carter, D. Carter, who's the board president, is going to speak a bit as well.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Mayor Henderson, Counsel, City Manager, I am Dellois D. Carr. I am the Chair of the Board for the Liberty Theater. We are so elated and actually honored for you all to take the time out to allow us to be here today. We had our initial presentation of our strategic plan on the 18th of November. I'm not sure if Mr. Latipo mentioned that or not. And we were so excited when we did see city government presentation. The thing is, that meant more than you can even think to us. It meant that we're not just doing this alone, you know? We have a sense of community in what we are doing. So, we are so thankful and honored for you all to have received our presentation. We've been here, you know, since the onset of the meeting today. As soon as I step out for the restroom break, you know, to take a phone call, is when I come back. But nevertheless, I'm so happy to be here. When I came to Columbus about five years ago now, there was a wise man, and you know him well, Mayor Rudy Allen. He told me, when you see a challenge, look at it as an opportunity. I believe due to the historical context that we know for the Liberty Theater, some of us may think challenge. I ask that you all think opportunity, okay? That's where I am. I've given my heart to service. My background is military service. And so, I came here at the onset, or the ending, actually, of my military career, active-duty-wise. So, I'm here to serve. I'm here to give you all a new face of the Liberty, new hope for the Liberty, Liberty, new engagement for the Liberty Theater. And not just the theater, but the district itself. Thank you all so much for your time and attention. I finally caught my breath. So, thank you again. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Counselor Huff.
Excuse me. Good afternoon and thank you for spending your day with us. The presentation was just absolutely wonderful the first time and very engaging even the second time. But for those that are just seeing it for the first time, we had a few of us there. And I think it was Counsel Tucker, Counsel Woodson, the mayor, myself, Tax Commissioner. And did I miss anybody elected? Anyway, they all took it in. But it's a different approach and it comes across very well. City Manager has very much interest in what's going on. So, I like the forming of, as they say, putting the puzzle back together and how we keep it together once we get it together. So, I thank you for your time and your efforts and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. And again, we appreciate your attendance at the rollout of the plan.
And I certainly appreciate the efforts that y'all are putting in. I think it's great that it's got a clearly defined direction and a path to follow. And it's got a leader that will try to put it on that course and make sure it doesn't get off in a ditch. So, thank y'all. And it seemed good to see you at the office. And thank y'all for briefing me on your findings.
Madam Chair and Ms. Latipo, thank you for being here. And we look forward to moving this plan, this strategic plan, forward. And we're here to support and work with you in any way that you can bring to us. So, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for your patience, too.
No, no problem.
So, with that, Mayor and Counsel, I've got the last presentation, the comprehensive camera update. And this is going to be very brief because we want the public to just know that we are working on something. But it is security-sensitive and we're not going to just share everything publicly when it has to do with security. And so, we are going to have further conversation with you all. And so, I would ask that you just receive this brief update and then we'll answer your questions a little bit later, Mayor and Counsel. I hope you'll do that for us. And so, with that, Deputy City Manager, good one.
Sounds good. Good afternoon. Just want to, first of all, remind you of the capability of these cameras that we, of course, have already shared with you. They have tag reader capability and they're mobile cameras that we will be placing in hot illegal dumping areas as well as public safety hotspot or crime hotspot areas throughout the city. They have the ability for public safety to have access, network to every camera, to the entire system. 360-degree cameras, which means these cameras will be able to see totally around 100 feet for each camera. And so, it goes further, but the clarity, we know, is at least 100 feet, 100 feet all around in all the cameras that are going to be placed in those various locations. We're looking at the same vendor software for all of this. There will be VPN access, which means that anyone that has access, of course, public safety and others who may have access to this, can see and view these cameras anywhere in the world. Wherever they are, they have access to these cameras. And then, of course, infrastructure improvements to ensure continuity and improve the reliability of what you will see. This is just a map of the coverage. Now, we have cameras that will be in all of the buildings in various buildings and amenities throughout the city. And we'll tell you a little bit more about particular locations. But this is what you see in terms of coverage. So, just think about, these are buildings that these cameras, these are not actual camera locations. These are building locations that are citywide. And of course, think about the number of cameras that will be in a particular area and then the 100 feet around each of those cameras. The camera locations, and we can share that with you later, of course. The numbers that you see here, for instance, under Parks and Recreation, it says 24. That's 24 separate locations that cameras will be in. One location may have 30 or 40 cameras. So, these are locations, trails. There are four different trails that cameras will be on, for instance. Public Works.
We're not telling you how many will be on those four trails.
Not how many cameras.
We're just telling you four trails, four locations.
That's right. Locations only.
But we'll give you the specifics later.
These are actual locations. Okay? And we are looking at a phased approach. Of course, today was going to be the day that we were going to be placing on the city manager's agenda for... But what we wanted to do is be able to share with you a phased approach because of the price tag, if you will. And so, what we're looking at, first of all, is Phase One, which means Parks and Rec, Riverwalk, Trails, and mobile cameras will be dispatched under Phase One. And then, of course, we're doing this just because that's the majority of cameras that's going to be out there. And then, of course, Phase Two, as you can see, those public safety areas, Muskogee County Sheriff's Office areas, Fire EMS, and the Health Department under Phase Two. Phase Three, of course, is Metro Civic Center, Public Works, and the Trade Center. And so, you see what those costs are and it's an $8.2 million total package. But again, we're looking at a phased approach and we'll talk further about that.
Yeah. And just to be clear, that when we talk about phased approach and you see these various offices, public safety and all, know that they already have cameras. And so, it's not like they're operating without cameras. When you do Phase One, that does not mean there are no cameras at those locations in Phase Two. They have plenty of cameras. But the new comprehensive plan will just network them all together. But, you know, a lot of you don't know, but Metro probably has more cameras than...
They do.
Anybody in town. So, they're in Phase Three. But right now, if you, you can't do anything around Metro and not be on camera.
That's right.
And so, they may be in Phase Three, but they have cameras, plenty of them.
And Civic Center as well.
And Civic Center. So, all of these locations currently have cameras. But we'll talk to you more and get more detail with you about this.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We do have one question.
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
City Manager, can you comment? I see mobile cameras, but I don't see anything on here that talks about public streets and roads.
We'll tell you a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. I just didn't see it on the list.
There will be cameras and hotspots and rights of way in various locations throughout the city, but we'll talk more.
Okay. Good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. For the Clerk's agenda, the first two items are resolutions excusing Counselor Huff and Thomas from the November 30th Consent Agenda Work Session Meeting.
Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem to approve Items 1, 2, and 3, seconded by Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, they're approved.
Item number four, this is a resolution approving, Ms. Kathy Jones.
All right. Motion from Counselor Crabbe, second from Counselor House. All in favor of Ms. Jones, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, let's make sure the public knows Ms. Jones was approved to serve on the Board of Tax Assessors. And the minute, there's a motion from the Mayor Pro Tem that the minutes be received. Is there a second? Second from Counsel Tucker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They're approved.
Next, we have board appointments. For the mayor's appointment, we have the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees, the seat of Jack Kingsman, the retired city employee representative.
And I've reached out. I just haven't heard anything back from them. Sorry. I meant to have it this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. The Animal Control Advisory Board, Mr. Raymond Culpepper. He was nominated to fill down expired term of Ms. Kristi Newley, and he may be confirmed.
Confirmation moved by Mayor Pro Tem. I heard a second from Counselor Crabbe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. It's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Personnel Review Board, we have some alternate seats that are open for nominations. The seat of Tracy Walker, Darlene Small, and Dr. Shanita Pettaway. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have a request to go into executive session to discuss litigation, personnel, and security. Oh, Counselor Davis.
The City Manager, go out. We'll get him. We'll get him. Mayor, we can get him when he comes back. Oh, that's okay. Go ahead. Proceed.
Okay. When we come back, is he coming? That's all right. We can come back to him after we come back from executive session.
Yeah, just, we'll come out. We'll come out.
All right. We do have a request to go into executive session for litigation, personnel, and security. I'll entertain a motion. All right. Motion second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are in executive session. All right. We are, we had been in executive session. We discussed litigation, personnel, and security. No votes were taken. And before I go to Counsel, well, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. City Manager, I was waiting until the end of the meeting to bring up two matters of referral, two items for...
of referral, two items for referral. And one is, I talked to the mayor about this, and I'm sure some of my colleagues are concerned about this and know about it, but Norfolk Southern, you've heard me talk about the issues with the railroad crossings, but evidently, they're doing some upgrades or improvement or working on their infrastructure. But while doing that, they are now digging the roads up again. But the last time I saw these roads, now, it was the last three or four days, but the last time I saw these roads, 54 Streets, one that comes to my mind, Smith Road's one that comes to my mind, probably some of my fellow colleagues can name, Second Avenue, maybe, I don't know, I'm not sure. But they're cutting grooves in the roads and then putting GAB on it, and they're not adequately going back over it to smooth it out. And you hit them, it's going to tear you front in and out. I'm surprised we hadn't started hearing from the citizens about this kind of stuff, but that's unacceptable. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. The second thing is, if we can get an update on, I know we have a sign ordinance, and we used to have, quote, "a sign person" that would go around and take care of matters, and they did a good job. But I've been receiving a lot of calls from citizens about the sign pollution all around town, and I have to admit, I see it, too. I don't know what we're doing now, and currently where we're at on that, as far as dealing with these signs that people just put all over the place, whether they're on telephone poles, or on the, you know, these little small signs, they're putting them up everywhere. But it's been to the point that I've had citizens call me, and I don't know how we, you know, sometimes you got to get creative on some of this stuff. I don't know how we would, how we would look at a matter like this, or even accept it. But I've got some of these people that said that they would volunteer their time, and their gas, and their expenses, and they will drive around this city as long as we give them a helper. They cannot get out, they won't get out of the car and get out and pick it up or whatever, but they got a truck, and they will volunteer their time and go around. If we give them some help and let some pick these signs up, they'll pick them up and get them off the streets, because they're saying it's becoming a problem. It's a little problem. It is a little problem. It's sign pollution is what it is. And they're doing it more and more, and the more and more they do it, it gets contagious, and it just keeps more and more and more and more. I'm seeing them everywhere.
Well, so what I'll do, to the sign issue first, concern, we do have a, still have a person who handles signs, but it's just one, there's just one person. So what I'm going to ask the Quality Control Group to do, they're out on Saturday and Sunday, make that a part of what they do. In other words, that quality control person that's riding around in the car identifying work orders, I want them to collect signs and bring back a trunkload of sands when they come back in in the afternoon on Saturday and Sunday. That's one way we can start to address it. But we do have a sign person who's out there daily, and we'll make sure they focus on getting the sign litter off the street. So those are just a couple of ways I think we can address it.
Well, again, I've got some people that are willing to volunteer, if you'll look into that.
Yeah, but I hate to put them in a position, because when our quality control people are out there, they're in a city car with the city emblem on it, and they have a shirt on, and they do have a badge that you know. And they get asked, you know, "What are you, why are you over here?" And they communicate that, who they are, because they get asked those questions. But if you don't have a city vehicle, and you go and take up my sand that I just put down there, then you get into an altercation. So they need to be like, "I'm a city official," and, you know, if they don't like it, they just simply call 911, and we get a response. So I don't want to put, people create altercations over the simplest things, and we don't want to put a citizen in that position.
I understand that. Maybe we can, I don't know, I'm just thinking out of the box. Maybe we can deputize them, or sign them up somehow that gives them the right to do it on behalf of the city.
It's kind of like, well, we're going to work on that sand concern. And to your first question, we've got a good Norfolk Southern legislative person, mayor knows him, he's visited with us, and Deputy City Manager Hodge, and they know him, and I've got his number in mind. He texted me the other day, you know, so we will get with, his name is Connor Poe, and he's the person that we deal with to get things done, and he's been really good in helping us. So she's going to text Connor Poe today, and we're going to work on that. Thank you, sure.
All right, Counselor Huff?
Yes, sir. I just, I have one last question. Is it still open for the booster shot at the Civic Center today for the employees? Till, what, 3 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just want to let them know, anybody listening, 3 o'clock? Okay, I'm headed there now. Thank you.
And I'll tell you, anybody between 9:00 and 11:00 can go behind the Health Department. They've got that drive-thru, and they'll take care of you as well. All right, any more comments from council? Anything else that needs to come forth? Motion adjourned, and a second from the Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Oh, happy birthday on December 11th to Counselor Tucker.